All right. It is five thirty-two P M and we will call the City of Durango City Council Regular Meeting to Order. It is August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a roll call?
Counselor Bossmans.
Present.
Mayor Buell.
Here.
Counselor Woodruff.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi.
Here.
And Counselor Youssef.
Excellent, item two, introduction of translator.
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. Hope you can hear my audio okay. If you can't, please let me know. Diego Pons here tonight with the C L C. I'm joined by my colleague Ruth Andrade. We're going to be providing simultaneous interpretation for the majority of this meeting. So as always, once I finish giving the statement in English, I'll repeat the instructions in Spanish. Then we'll start the interpretation. At that moment, you'll see the globe icon that will appear in the bottom right-hand corner of your computer screen, which will say interpretation. Please choose that globe icon and please select to prefer a language. And if you're joining the meeting on your cellphone or tablet, please look for the more button or the three dots button to select to prefer a language this other way. If you're not fully bilingual, strongly encourage you to select to prefer a language so you can use the interpretation whenever someone's going to be speaking in the opposite language. If you're bilingual, then just feel free to listen to everyone in the original language. And as always, just please pay attention to the speed in which you're speaking. As long as you're speaking at a conversational pace like this, you're going at a great speed for us. But just please make sure you don't pick up your reading speed. So thank you so much for that. Buenas tardes a todos y a todas. Mi nombre es Diego Pons. Estoy aquí con mi colega Ruth Andrade de parte del grupo del C L C. Vamos a proporcionar hoy la interpretación simultánea para la reunión de hoy en inglés y en español. Cuando termine yo daré es daré esas instrucciones. Vamos a activar interpretación. En ese momento va a aparecer un icono, un globo de la tierra que va a ser interpretación ahí abajo en la derecha de su pantalla. Por favor, elija ese icono, globo de la tierra, y por favor, seleccione su idioma preferido. Pero si hoy usted está haciendo la reunión en su celular o en su tableta, por favor, busque la opción que dice more, que quiere decir más, o posiblemente el botón de tres puntos para que pueda elegir su idioma preferido de esa otra manera. Así que si usted no es completamente bilingüe, le vamos a aconsejar que elija, por favor, su idioma preferido para que pueda utilizar interpretación cuando alguien está hablando en el otro idioma. Y si usted sí es bilingüe, se puede sentir libre escuchar a todos hoy en su idioma original. Y por último, un recordatorio. Nos acaban de avisar que van a ver algunos comentarios que se harán en español hoy en persona o virtualmente. Así que durante ese momento vamos a tener que apagar la interpretación simultánea aquí en Zoom para interpretar ahí para todas las personas presentes y en Zoom. Por favor, vamos a tener que utilizar la interpretación consecutiva durante ese periodo de los comentarios públicos en español. Les daremos un recordatorio. Por favor, acuérdense de hablar lentamente y tomar pausas cada diez o quince segundos para que podamos interpretar inmediatamente luego ustedes y les darán más tiempo para que tengan suficiente tiempo para dar sus comentarios. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Item number three, opening remarks by mayor and council. Does anyone have any opening remarks? For the record, I was going to have the La Plata County Fair Director come. I went to the fair last weekend, two week, last weekend, I think it was last weekend. And I asked them to come and do a presentation. All the kids in four H they had did amazing work, such hard work. And they wanted to have their board meeting first and then come. So they're going to be coming in October, just FYI. Presentations and proclamations, item four, we don't have any items. Item five, city manager updates.
No update.
Excellent. Item six, committee, board and liaison reports.
Yeah, pick it off. We had our Chamber of Commerce Board meeting this morning. So we are so close to hiring the CEO for the chamber. We're still working on with the candidate on compensation agreement. But the nine R Superintendent Karen Chesser spoke to workforce development and a clean tech summit going on at the end of the month in Cortez. So really excited about that. She also spoke about the talent pipeline initiative and the the sector convenor for the Southwest Educational Collaborative is working on that to get local kids up and running on accreditations, micro certificates, that sort of thing. So they're still needing businesses to sign up on the career launch Southwest. So if you're a business owner or business operator, they're still looking for businesses to really connect those businesses with local students for job shadows, internships, mentorships, that sort of thing. Chamber has also announced that Durango Rocks Chamber Awards nominations are open and the ceremony will be held at the Community Concert Hall on February twentieth. They are also excited to co-host the Durango's Next Step Forum on August twenty-seventh. It's going to be at the the Innovation Center at the main mall. So excited to be present for that. Also, I attended the La Plata Economic Development Alliance meeting in your stead, mayor, on the thirteenth. Lynn Hyde was there from the County Community Development Department. She was kind of going over her process review and where they're trying to refine their process to shorten application completion times for applicants and really trying to look, look to how they can make that more streamlined for everybody. Project Run gave an update on their two fundamentals of leadership and management courses that were held both spring and summer. They're also putting focus on the next two programs this fall, which are going to be digital literacy and essential skills courses. And so also, lastly, Local First Foundation presented on their Peak Health Alliance partnership to bring affordable healthcare to Southwest Colorado. So more to come there. And then lastly, I think we're all looking forward to the Colorado Association of Ski Towns meeting. It's going to be held Thursday and Friday here in Durango. So that's it.
Yeah, I can go ahead and I attended a C C four C A meeting, which is the Colorado Communities for Climate Action, which is a coalition of about just over forty local governments across the state advocating for stronger state and federal climate policy. And that meeting included updates on finances, specific projects taking place or plans such as power plants and air emissions, race reduction, and it included follow-up and action items of the annual retreat that took place earlier that year.
Alrighty, so on Wednesday, seventh, I attended the Colorado Trust meeting up at Fort Lewis College and it was a funding group. So I had the opportunity to meet with some of their clients in the area and how they're providing funding to some of the local groups. And then the local groups, of course, give out services to their clients. That was really interesting. And then on the eighth, I attended the R H A board meeting that was held at Inacio. So we just had a roundabout update on all the projects that are happening in La Plata County. And then, of course, Mike will give more information about that. But that was, we're making a real effort to meet in the different communities so everybody doesn't feel like they have to come to Durango. And then on the twelfth, we had the U R A meeting. And that was just a general overview of what we're going to be accomplishing this year. And Tommy gave an update on what the project statuses are. And then on the, the most interesting thing I did for me was that for nine R, and I did this last year, they have a native panel for their teacher orientation to try to give them some cultural tips on how to deal with the students they're teaching. So that was held at nine R on the fourteenth in the afternoon. And so there was a panel of four of us and it gave the teachers an opportunity to ask us directly how to deal with some issues when it comes to the students. So that was real fulfilling. And then, of course, on the fifteenth with the mayor, I went to the neighborhood meeting concerning nineteen seventeen Track C on Third, Third Avenue. And I found it very fulfilling to listen to all the neighborhood and what they came and said and how they interacted with the mayor and how we looked to see if we had any common issues where we could resolve problems. And that was all.
I had the neighborhood meeting with the library neighborhood. I thought it went great. I had got lots of great feedback. It was wonderful listening to all the different viewpoints and concerns and trying to find that common ground. I loved getting to know a few of the neighborhood residents a little bit better as we walked around and kind of, you know, I just enjoyed most of the people. I felt like even if we didn't agree, Bill's laughing at me. Even if we didn't agree, we kind of came out with the understanding that we've all love the, the city and they love their neighborhood. And I think that that is the biggest takeaway. And all the wonderful emails I got afterwards thanking me for coming. And I think that it was very productive. And so I thank Clancy for putting it on. I think that, you know, some people were tentative when it was starting, but I think it was really successful in terms of the best way to hear from everybody and then also be able to kind of respond in a little bit more casual way. Because as you guys know, when you come up here and you speak for three minutes at public comment, I can't respond from the dais. We can't respond from the dais. And so it definitely gives us a little bit, I don't know. I feel like it makes me a little bit more real and human and you can kind of understand some viewpoints a little bit. And so I enjoy those, those opportunities and I look forward to having more here. The right now, I also have right now going on is the West Slope Startup Week. I don't know if any of you have attended any of the sessions. That's great and it's all around. It was, it's a free conference for entrepreneurs all over the West Slope. People I met someone from Steamboat Springs today and Grand Junction. And so there's a lot of people from out of town learning about some startup, great things. I wanted to piggyback and just remind everyone because I've been seeing a bunch of comments online, like when can we give feedback about Durango next steps and tell people how we feel? Obviously, and like I always say during public comment, we're here, I just can't respond. But next Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, from eight A M to ten A M, am I right? Is that all right so far? I think so, okay. From eight A M to ten A M at the Innovation Center is a Durango Next Steps Forum. And so we'll have city staff there. There'll be a moderator and it's all, yes, published on Engage Durango, I think, right? Yes, great, perfect. So that's there. This Friday, we have the Colorado Association of Ski Towns coming into town. That'll be great to learn from some like cities. And I think that's all I have for reports. All right. Moving on to item number seven, public comment on agenda items only. Can we have the instructions?
Public comment is encouraged on specific items published on tonight's agenda. These items will be announced by the mayor. Public comments on non-agenda items come later in the meeting. Please note, you must sign up prior to the mayor calling the item on the agenda. Signing up after the item is called will result in your name not being called to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your full name, the agenda item you intend to speak on, and if you are a resident of the City of Durango, make your comments directly to the council. Do not expect a response from the council or staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person unless modified by the council. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Comments must be specific to city matters on tonight's agenda. Profanity, hate speech, derogatory remarks, speech unrelated to published agenda matters or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of order by the chair and any remaining time will be forfeited by the speaker. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order. Only a majority vote of the council can modify time limits.
Excellent. Before we start, I just want to do a housekeeping item. I was notified there's potentially some Spanish-speaking public comment. I don't know if it's this agenda item or the next agenda item. I just wanted to take, I have to take a council vote. So it's majority that we give anyone who needs translation services, six minutes instead of the three minutes.
I move to give anybody that needs translation services, six minutes instead of three minutes for their allotted time.
Second, excellent. Can I get a roll call?
Mayor Buell.
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans.
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Yasi.
Yes, great, excellent. All right, now we can go for public comment or yes, thank you, Ben.
And the first individual for public comment on agenda items is Lisa Stone and that'll be followed by Martha Evers.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Stone and I'm the Executive Director for Tri-County Head Start. We serve children and families in Monizuma County, La Plata County and Archuleta County. I'm here regarding the lease for the vacant lot that is across from our current location. We have been serving children and families in this area that are at the, at the poverty level or below for over thirty years. And the location that we're in, we serve families through a hundred-year-old house and two modulators. And I say to people all the time, we have put as much lipstick on these buildings as, as possible and it's just time to do something different. So about six months ago, I met with the Office of Head Start and they encouraged us to submit an application to build new construction, which I will tell you, this is very rare in the Head Start world. They typically want to do modulators. And so we were pretty excited that we were able to, to go through that process. And I'm here tonight to say, first of all, thank you to the City of Durango for all their support in our current location and that we're very excited about the possibility of building new construction. That it, that's it, okay.
And the next individual is Martha Evers and that'll be followed by Sweetie Marbury.
Martha Evers, nineteen eleven East Second Avenue. And I am going to read. I'm formally requesting the city council to table the discussion tonight regarding the ordinance proposal for the leasing agreement for the nineteen seventeen East Third Lot until a formal amendment to the proposal is received and posted on the city's website. Tracy Reynolds did come forward and he agreed to separate them. He thought was the best idea. And so when we looked at the Engage Durango site, however, it's all just pretty much the same. And so we're just assuming that either your stance is the same and you haven't, or you haven't been able to change that yet. And so we're not okay with, we are okay with what Tracy Reynolds is, is doing, but we're not okay with what the city is saying they're doing on your actual site. So we're asking you to table this ordinance until you have done it correctly and that we see you're behind it and not just Tracy Reynolds. The other thing that I wanted to say, and you know, we, we have had to search out all of our information. We really haven't received much from the city until of late. But things like, for example, parking, you know, we haven't heard anything except that you guys were getting to it. And, you know, you have a agreement with two medical facilities in our neighborhood. You have an agreement and this is between Head Start, between the city, which is the library, and also these two medical facilities. And it is a blatant disregard of the contract that you have done with these two medical facilities. And, you know, I'm starting to feel like, like it's like a contract that's writ on water. I mean, it has no validity. How do people trust you in the future if you're not going to keep your contracts? And so these four guys are just saying, you know, so three hundred and fifty lots, you're trying to, from my understanding, part of the city street will be used for that. Even if you, so what I'm saying is, the workforce housing has no business being in this. Our neighborhood is not, we have never been against Head Start. We have never been against workforce housing. But it is just like unbelievable that you are not going to keep your agreement. And.
Wrap it up, thank you, thank you.
Those two things I hope you all take seriously. Thank you.
The next individual signed up to speak is Sweetie Marbury.
My name is Sweetie Marbury and I'm a Durango resident. I came tonight to speak on the ordinance concerning city council's procedures. First of all, I object to public participation on number thirteen at the end of the meeting. I suggest that council reports be moved to number thirteen. We did that when I was on city council and it wasn't a problem for the members of the council. And it certainly gave the participants that came and gave up their dinners and their family time an earlier time to speak to the city council. It's a difficult, it's difficult for people to even get here at five thirty. We started meetings at six o'clock. I've seen people rushing in. These people, and I salute everyone that's in the auditorium tonight because you are highly motivated, in my opinion, to be here. So bless your hearts, all of you. The second one I have that is the eighteen-months procedure that, that you postponed something, an issue. I find it really unnecessary. I've never heard a reason for this change. I've never seen a reason for this change. I've been coming to city council since nineteen eighty-seven and it has never been a problem. And so I'm wondering, is it a problem just for this city council? So I encourage you to delete those sections in your ordinance. I, as a former mayor, cannot see any reasoning for that. Thank you very much.
And next will be Dick White, followed by Tiffany Chacon.
We can't see the clock from down here.
I think it's right there.
Okay, thanks.
But you have multiple agenda items, correct?
I do.
And so is, does he sign up for specific one?
This one is regarding the council rules and procedure.
My name is Dick White. I live at five seventy-five East Eighth Street in Durango. I, because I intend to speak on several items, I'll try to be brief. Overall, I believe the codification of council rules and procedures is reasonable and substantially consistent with past practice. However, one exception is the relegation of public input on non-agenda items to near the end of the agenda. In this opinion, that fails to manifest commitment to public engagement. To schedule a bi-monthly public engagement meeting sparsely attended by city councilors does not compensate for agendized discouragement of the public from speaking publicly and directly to the county, city council. I, I could keep going on a separate item, but probably take me longer than, longer than the two minutes that I've got left.
It'd be up to you, mayor. I can call Mr. White back up here in a few moments.
Let's do that, it'll be, it'll be cleaner.
Oh, okay, great.
And so next up is Tiffany Chacon and that's regarding the introduction of the ordinance authorizing the lease to Head Start.
Hello, thank you all for having us, for bringing this forward. Again, my name's Tiffany Chacon. I am not a Durango city resident. I am a county resident, but I do a lot of work for the City of Durango, specifically for our families and our early childhood education. I want to start off really by thanking all of you, our city councilors and our staff for listening to us when we came to you and we told you that we need childcare, that this is not acceptable. You heard our cry and not only did you say that you were going to help us, but you actually took action. We recognize that, we acknowledge that and we thank you very much. I'm here tonight to discuss openly the leasing opportunity for Head Start at the library, next to the library, parking. And I just want to talk about how Head Start is such a crucial service for our community here. In fact, they serve, as they stated earlier, our families that are below the poverty level and they also have high qualifying factors that look at cases of trauma and other cases that really designate that they need high-quality childcare, that they are not receiving that at home. This is a desperate need. I myself was a single mother. I had those high qualifying factors as well. I was working two jobs with twins and I did not receive a call at all because they do not have space, period. If they were able to move to this location, they'd be able to double their capacity and serve forty-five more children every single day. And as Lisa was speaking about, the time for funding is now. I highly request that you do not table this, that you do not let this slide because they need to start searching for that funding right now in orders to start making an impact on the families within our community. There are many parents who are like myself, who are working tirelessly. They're doing everything they can to provide for their families, but the system is not set up to support them. I know that our city, I know that our county is taking moves to change that. And I do understand that the process and the community engagement seems to be a barrier right now on moving this forward. And that sucks, period. Why should childcare be stopped? Because you don't know that, you don't know the system on how to engage. So I highly encourage the city to figure out how to share that system, share that engagement opportunity with our community members so that they see, they do have the opportunity to engage, to provide feedback and to shape the way that whatever happens, happens. But do not stop the creation of this new childcare opportunity that can really impact our community. Thank you again. And if you ever want to talk about childcare, anybody in the city or anybody behind me, I can talk to you about why we need it. It does not just affect our families. It does not just affect our kids. It affects all of us that live here and call this place home and want to stay here. Thank you.
And so there's six more people who are, who are intending to speak on eight point six point one, the introduction of the ordinance authorizing leasing of city-owned property at nineteen seventeen East Third Abda Head Start. And so the next person is Kelly Hahn. That's going to be followed by Chris Paulson.
Hello, my name is Kelly Hahn. I live at twenty fifty East Second Avenue and am here as one of the members of the Library Neighborhood Association to formally request the city council to table the discussion tonight regarding the ordinance proposal for the leasing agreement for the nineteen seventeen East Third Lot. Per the August sixteenth, city manager's email summary after talking with Tracy Reynolds, that his team feels the best course of action is to continue forward with the Head Start development on Track C and separate the workforce housing component on Tract F from the project. Tract F is no longer under consideration for development. If and when it is considered for possible development, an R F Q will be issued. However, I do not anticipate it to be done until after Head Start can secure funding and begin development on Track C. I would like to thank Tracy Reynolds for withdrawing Tract F from the R F I and Q issued in February. It was a smart public relations decision on his part and his company. However, per the Engage Durango Newsflash, the City of Durango states the lease would not approve development or design on either tract or otherwise advance the other concepts in the selected bid, which would come at a later date to be determined. Additionally, when reviewing the Engage Durango website where the project is posted, it still lists Phase One and Phase Two from the selected proposal. Is it removed or not? I ask the city to request a formal amendment to the proposal that only lists Tract C before proceeding with this ordinance. There are conflicting statements by the city and what is posted online. Due to the historic opaque nature of this project and flawed process, I am questioning what else was discussed in the conversation between the city and Reynolds. I am respectfully asking the city council to table the presentation of the ordinance for Tract C until the city receives a formal amendment to the proposal removing Tract F entirely and removes the Phase Two from the Engage Durango website. This will provide transparency with the process and begin to build trust with the neighborhood and community at large. Thank you.
The next individual for eight point six point one is Chris Paulson and that'll be followed by Martha Evers.
Yeah, my name is Chris Paulson. I do live in the city, four twenty-three East Thirtieth Street, Durango. And I just want to second the idea of tabling this lease and agenda item. And I haven't spoken with either of these people beforehand that also had suggested tabling. All I did was go into your agenda items and I looked at the agenda items for, for the lease. And right in there under the various wherés, it says, whereas the City of Durango released R F Q for conceptual site development for Tract C of the Mercy Medical Center Plan Development, Kiran. here in after PD, which resulted in a notice of, which resulted in a notice of intent to award issued to Head Start, Reynolds, Ash &amp; Associates, and the AgA group involving Track C and Track F of the PD. And also during, and you look at the strategic plan alignment, and it all relates to housing and affordable housing and public-private partnerships. I think, and then also under a purpose and background, it's in the second graph, you see the city issued a notice of award to a project applicant teaming, team consisting of Head Start, Reynolds, Ash &amp; Associates. So it's all in your, in your agenda item and in your, and in your, this, this introduction of ordinance, that in fact, you're going forward with this agreement with Reynolds, Ash &amp; Associates, along with Head Start. The language totally needs to be cleaned up here. And so that it's really clear that, just as she read, that you're separating out Track C from Track F and that there's going to be a whole separate process involving Track F. If you go forward of this, again, it's, it's a matter of trust. We were, we were at that meeting with the, with the mayor and the, and the neighbors and we saw the article in the paper the next day that said, no, they're just going forward with the Head Start program and not with the program for housing. But then when you look at the agenda item, it's all just pretty much the same thing. So it's, again, it's like, wait a second. This isn't, this isn't really being truthful. It's not being what, what the neighborhood understood from that meeting and also from the news article that appeared in the Durango Herald. So I would encourage you to table this item. And I would work out the whole agenda item with representatives from the, from the neighborhood before you proceed. And as far as this lease, everybody's in favor of Head Start, no problem there. Now, I saw there also, we're talking about a lease agreement that begins the first of January 2025. That's four to five months down the road. So two weeks, a delay is not going to, you know, create a huge problem. And I'd also like to see these various grants and when are the deadlines for application? You know, we're being, I feel like you guys are being rushed into this because of this need to do some, some applications for Head Start. And I'm thinking, well, what are the deadlines? What actually do you have to have? Yeah, okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And up next was Martha Evers. And I'm not, I know Martha maybe spoke, were you wanting to speak on another, a different item or? That would be a non-agenda item and you could still sign up for that if you'd like.
Well, just place a note that's under non-agenda item so you don't have to sign up again.
Thank you. And next will be Peter Glick, followed by Bill Lemire.
My name is Peter Glick. I live in the county, but I own property in the city, so I feel obligated to speak. I'm talking about the parking lot at Lot C of the Riverside Building. And I, first of all, I want you to know that I'm in favor of everything that's going to happen with Head Start, with the exception of what's going to happen to the parking that's been promised to the two buildings on either side of the library and the library. Track C has about 45 or 50 spaces that are required according to the PD. And I'm working with the community development and I do have some meetings planned with others in the city to try and discuss this. They've been very helpful in trying to find us additional parking. But every time I talk to them, we still need to find more parking. And they're already taking up most of the parking lot on the streets to give to these buildings and we're still short many spaces. And I don't know how you can go forward with the Head Start lease without knowing where you're going to accommodate the parking for those three buildings. And I'm just worried, because I don't really trust the city, that they're going to go back on the word of the contracts that we made some years ago that gave those three buildings and Head Start the parking that they needed and required. So I ask that you table any votes or whatever else you're going to do. I'm not familiar with the way the city works until we can figure out how to deal with the parking. But we don't want to stop Head Start, but we do have this issue and I want to make sure that we have the parking that we need. That's all.
And up next will be Bill Lemire, followed by Mary Finley.
Good evening. My remarks tonight, I am Bill Lemire and I am resident of Durango on East Second Avenue in the neighborhood of the Track C lot at 1917. My remarks then relate tonight to that motion to introduce an ordinance related to leasing of the property at 1917 East Third Avenue. Want to begin by thanking, thanking the mayor for coming out and engaging with us. That was, I know that took time away from your family and your hockey family, and we appreciate you coming out and spending time with us. We don't agree on everything, but I hope that we are agreeable. So thank you. Also want to thank Councilor Yasi for coming out and that, I have to say, Councilor Yasi, your, your willingness to listen is impressive. And your constituents, thank you for that. I want to say one other thing about this, just so we don't have this, begin to have this posturing of us and them on Head Start in the neighborhood. I'm a part of the, I'm a part of the group that's going to introduce a ballot initiative to create a library district. One of the things that will do is create, loosen up perhaps $3 million to go toward affordable childcare and go toward affordable workforce, workforce housing. So it, it's not a matter of us being against Head Start or that, it's just that this process, as is pointed out, could be more transparent. I think at the end, with some of the adjustments that Kelly Hahn mentioned earlier, could be more productive. I just think that more transparent, the more transparency we have, the more dialogue we have with staff, with council, will just make this much better. So accordingly, I want to second Kelly's idea to, to table, meaning to postpone for two weeks to the next council meeting until some of the technical issues that she mentioned are cleared up and we have full transparency. Then we'd be very willing to move forward with this. So thank you for that and I hope that you will consider making those changes and also for postponing the vote tonight until the next council meeting. Thank you.
And up next is Mary Finley.
Hi, I'm Mary Finley. People call me Emmy. And I'm terrified upon speaking, so I basically am seconding what Kelly and Bill are saying. So did want to really thank all the city council members, especially Mayor Buell and Councilmember Yasi for coming out and Mr. Madrigal as well at that meeting. I know especially for Jessica, it was probably a little uncomfortable and she hung in there with us and we really appreciate that kind of communication and I agree Ms. Yasi has been very helpful and very supportive in just listening, you know, not that that necessarily means we agree on everything, but I think feeling heard is super important and that meeting really went a long way towards that. I was really looking forward to coming tonight and saying, yay, full steam ahead on Head Start, because I am totally in support of that. I have friends with young children. I know how desperate this need is and I am in total support of them, but unfortunately I do have to concur and I'm hoping this is just a technical glitch you guys just didn't get to yet. But I concur with Ms. Hahn and Ms. Lemire that, you know, as is, the ordinance does still include the intent to, to award for the workforce housing on Lot F. And so until we get that language cleaned up, I would ask that we postpone that ordinance. I sure hope we can get this resolved by two weeks from now when, you know, hopefully we can just give Head Start the go-ahead because that is a really vital service. And I think everyone in the community and in the neighborhood is, is very supportive of that. I'm sure they're not feeling like that, sitting in the back listening to us right now, but we really are. But we do think the current proposal for Lot F, which I know we're not discussing, would just really be a disaster the way it's presented. It's too dense, there's parking issues, there's so many issues. And so to have those two linked, I just don't feel that we can. And again, I'm hoping this was just, oh gosh, we're really busy, we didn't get around to cleaning up that language and this will be a really easy thing. So, and then I hope, moving forward, which hopefully we will be soon with the Head Start, I would encourage you all to just continue to listen. There are some real challenges in that neighborhood. So I live in that neighborhood and gosh, every day, you know, from about 7:30 till 6 o'clock at night, every single street parking spot is full, the library parking lot's full. So parking, I know, not very sexy and exciting to talk about, but it is a real issue. And I think with the increased, you know, traffic with Head Start, we also have the, the Catholic school there. Sorry, I'm blinking because I'm so nervous. But they all come, you know, pretty much at the same time that Head Start would be. And so, you know, traffic and parking, sure, we can work it out, but we do want to feel like we've had a chance to, to talk about it. Not maybe before the initial ordinance, but just please asking that you continue to listen to us throughout there. Thank you all so much for your time. And Head Start, please forgive us, we really are in support of you and hopefully two weeks from now, we can all be standing up here saying, yay, go, let's get this Head Start thing done. Thank you all so much.
And so next up is going to be Rick Cobb, and that's regarding item 11.1, which is Resolution 2024-48, submitting to the registered electors of the city at the November 25th election a ballot issue and title concerning an extension of the expiring sales tax. So Rick Cobb can kick it off.
Thanks. Rick Cobb, resident of Three Springs, which is part of Durango, right? I am looking at the, the proposed language for the ballot initiative to renew the 2005 sales tax for another 30 years at the same rate. And I like that the 50% of that tax that would go towards parks, open space, trails, et cetera, is the first thing that's listed because I think that helps sell that tax. I think a lot of my talk tonight will be just, where can I find more information about the tax? For example, how much revenue is it projected to generate over 30 years? Like to know how much would then be going towards the, the post type of items versus the, the second part of the tax, which would go to capital improvement projects and issuing bonds for, in this case, the renovation of the Buckley Park Building for City Hall and for the Police Department. One of the things for the parks things is things being submitted to a citizen advisory board. And my understanding is that the original sales tax had similar language and that spurred the creation of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, which served the purpose of working with Parks and Rec to help prioritize those capital improvement projects, which were then submitted to the city. So since the dissolution of that board a couple of years ago, I don't know if the financial advisory board has been acting in that capacity. My understanding there is that their role is really to make sure the projects that come to them are funded from the proper spot in the budget. That's not the same as prioritizing the things that come to them. So I, my question is, what does that mean in that ballot initiative? What is citizen advisory board? Because I don't think if, if it's meant to be financial advisory board, I don't think that's their job and it's not what I would hope would happen in terms of us having an ability to have input and influence the prioritization of projects. Because there's $400 million worth of projects, who gets to order those? The next part of the ballot talks about $61 million being the, the cost that would be allocated towards the, the renovation with a repayment cost of $123 million. So does that mean that's the interest against that money? I don't know where to look for the total cost of what the renovation is expected to cost now and if it's more than $61 million or $123 million, is that coming from general funds? I think I've seen presentations earlier, but I'd like to be able to put my finger on those to just see what the math looks like. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then next regarding 11.1 as well is Sweetie Marbury.
My name is Sweetie Marbury and I am a citizen of Durango. Yay. I too support the 205. You heard me say that for many months. And I too support a reauthorization of a Parks and Recreation Board. I feel like, Rick, the financial advisory board is overwhelmed. I've attended their meetings and they're dealing with streets, sewers, water, as well as Parks and Recreation, as well as any, any type of the sales tax. And that's really not their function to prioritize. That's why we had citizens advisory boards. And that was killed by the city council before you sat there. And we've enjoyed many, many, many meetings with citizens at Parks and Recreation. But I want to tell you about a meeting I attended last Monday with 12 mayors of Durango. The 12 mayors of Durango discussed the 205 sales tax reauthorization. We are suggesting to this city council that the ballot be moved to April for the following reasons. First, the ballot is very crowded with state issues, also from the county, possibly 9R. And I feel, the 12 mayors feel, that the ballot of 205 will get lost in its priority for you as well as the 12 mayors. We want this motion to pass and we feel like there's not enough time for public relations of the city council, opinion pieces in the Durango Herald or the Telegraph, for you to be on the radio or television to explain to the voters, my neighbors, for example, that don't take the Herald and don't know what's going on. I've been on city council and we were successful with the 2015 and the 2019 sales tax, but we engage the community and it takes a lot of time to engage the community. And we feel like there is not enough time, this is basically September. And we are encouraging you to put it off until April and therefore you would have more time for the committees to help to build the relationship with the voters, for you to speak at Kiwanis and the Rotary, to write opinion pieces and explain why you need this to happen and the benefits of the 205. It really hurt me when the ballot failed because of the Police Department. I support the Police Department and I am here to support them again. And I don't want to see it fail again. And you don't want to let down the Police Department. So I'm really urging you to put this off until April. You don't want to feel that hurt. You don't want to have to face the men in the lobby and the men in the back and the men and women who serve us. Thank you.
Lastly, for item 11.1 is Dick White.
I was here a few minutes ago. I'm still Dick White, still living on Eighth Street. I speak as a former city council member and mayor to voice my support for the proposed extension of the 2005 sales tax. Both purposes identified in the ballot language deserve full support of our community. The earlier sales taxes have enabled the city to build first-class recreation facilities and to acquire abundant open space for the enjoyment of our residents. Durango Mesa Park represents another major opportunity for the, the community with considerable attached costs. Moreover, the existing parks, open spaces and trails still require maintenance. I believe that extending the allocation of half the 2005 sales tax for the stated purposes with the mandate, with the mandate for review of expenditures by a citizen advisory board is altogether appropriate and desirable. Likewise, given the payoff of the bond that built Durango's superb public library and funded the, a major multimodal improvement on Florita Road, I wholeheartedly support renewing capital improvement funding and allocating renewing capital improvement funding and allocating it to meeting the longstanding facility needs while also preserving the historic, former Durango High School. I can attest from my own council experience, the difficulty of finding and acquiring a suitable site to replace the substandard building that our long-suffering police officers have used and later endured for nearly forty years. Likewise, I know the longstanding challenge of locating a suitable space to replace our now sixty year old City Hall and consolidate the dispersed locations of nearly all city staff members in a single remodeled facility. Together with the sale of River City Hall to the Durango Fire Protection District, purchase of the historic high school and nine R administration building represents a rare win-win-win solution to a previously insurmountable facility challenge. Unfortunately, I must add a statement of disappointment that staff and council came to nearly the last moment to finalize the ballot language and did so without consultation of the Financial Advisory Board. Upon looking closely, I find it unfortunate that the narrow description of the mandate of the board did not require such a consultation. Having witnessed what I believe was ill-conceived abolishment of the earlier advisory boards, I find it deeply unfortunate that you did not find it proven to avail yourself of the deep citizen expertise available on the Financial Advisory Board.
We have two people who were wanting to speak on eleven point two, which is the resolution to adopt the zero emission vehicle transition plan for transit. And the first individual is Waylon Ryan.
Thank you, Council. Waylon Ryan, resident of Durango. And I'm here on behalf of my role as the Sustainability and Policy Manager with Visit Durango. And a part of our ten-year Climate Action Plan that we've been working on to get our tourism industry to net zero no later than twenty fifty is that we support to adopt the zero emission vehicle transition plan, because that'll help us reach our goal of getting zero emissions from our visitors when they're in La Plata County, traveling to different destinations and areas within La Plata County. Thank you.
And next up is Mr. Dick White.
As long as I I'm here tonight, I'm taking the opportunity. I want to speak briefly on this item to applaud the city's efforts to foster sustainability and emissions reduction in its transit fleet. I would make the important observation about the cost calculations, which simply compare operational and capital costs of using internal combustion engines with those of the zero emission vehicles. They omit the externalized costs of emissions as calculated in the social cost of carbon, which is about officially in the United States, a little under two hundred dollars a ton, per metric ton of carbon. Such costs do not accrue directly to the city unless it's with hotel, health costs to employees. But they are borne by people around the world, including our city residents and employees. Cost accounting for climate change is complex and controversial, but the costs do continue to accrue and increase from year to year. In the Sustainability Plan, the city does address climate change and articulate its commitment to mitigating it, as well as adapting to its unavoidable impacts. Fleet emissions make a significant contribution to the city's emissions, so fulfilling such commitment holds value beyond the dollars and cents invested. For that reason, even though it's relatively low priority in the in the plan, as outlined in the plan, I suggest that whenever possible, the city advance the purchase of EVs for administrative use, so that citizens can view them arriving around town and manifest the city's efforts.
And Mr. White had also indicated he wanted to speak on the proposed review of the Sustainability Budget and Action Plan.
Okay. This will be even shorter. As you know, I'm a longtime sustainability advocate, and I was an active supporter during my city council service. And so I want to thank Marty Poole for his excellent service as the city's Sustainability Manager. The city aspires to leadership in the sustainability arena. To my mind, that means allocating budgetary resources on a par with our leading, with other leading sustainability communities. Did a little online research, and I found that Fort Collins, who's a longtime leader that I knew about long before I moved to Colorado, has a sustainability staff of fifty for a community of three hundred and fifty nine thousand people. Denver and the city and county of Denver is double that size. It's some, well, not quite, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, but they have a staff of sixty one. A national leader, Santa Monica, California, has a population of ninety thousand, and they have a staff of ten. So to provide a basis for comparison with Durango, I simply divided the population by the number of sustainability staff for each city, five thousand for Fort Collins, twelve thousand for Denver, nine thousand for Santa Monica, and about twenty thousand for Durango. On this basis, considering the very substantial growth in other staff in recent years, I urge the city council, before the manager finishes formulating his recommended budget, to increase the sustainability staff to full, to full-time positions. Let's support our community, let's support our sustainability rhetoric with a financial commitment with another pair of boots on the ground.
And Mayor, that's all of the public comment for agenda-related items.
Excellent.
I pulled the list at the at the top of the recording, so they may have signed up afterwards.
Did you sign up before the item was called, or did you know? Okay, well, I'll make an exception, and you can step forward and give public comment. Childcare, you know.
Hello, Heather Holland, four fifty, Mariposa, Durango. I am here to thank you for making childcare an initiative and a priority in our community. We are in desperate need of childcare centers in our town. We have over forty percent of families that are looking for care for children under five years of age. That is a significant number. So we're looking at nine hundred and eleven families as of last year in La Plata County. A lot of people may not live in Durango City proper, but outside and work in the city and need care here in Durango. So it is very important that we provide opportunities, and Head Start is really a great opportunity of doubling the size for all families. Because if we have more availability for Head Start families, that opens up additional spots in other centers in town. And so that is really a great way to provide childcare opportunities to all families. So I really appreciate all the work that you're doing. And I think being across from the library is a really great location, offers great educational resources for families to go to to do free things after school. So I think the location couldn't be a better place. And I really condone your efforts of doubling the size and looking for opportunities to really be innovative and where we can build without shutting down any childcare centers. So thank you very much.
Okay, moving along to item eight, the consent agenda. Can we have a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item eight point one is approval of meeting minutes. Eight point one point one is approval of minutes from the August second, twenty twenty four City Council Special Meeting. Eight point one point two is approval of minutes for the August sixth, twenty twenty four City Council Regular Meeting. We have two items under final reading of ordinances. Eight point two point one is final reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash twelve, authorizing the borrowing borrowing of funds by the Airport Enterprise Fund from the Colorado State Infrastructure Bank for Terminal Improvements at the Durango La Plata County Airport. Eight point two point two is final reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirteen, establishing city council rules of procedure. There are no items under adoption of resolutions by consent. Under approval of other administrative items, we have eight point four point one, approval of an implied consent agreement involving water service for five sixty seven County Road two thirty nine. There are no items for requests for public hearing. Under eight point six, introduction of ordinances, we have eight point six point one, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the leasing of city-owned property located at nineteen seventeen East Third Avenue to Head Start Durango four C Council Tri-County Head Start Program, scheduled for September fourth, twenty twenty four. Eight point six point two is an introduction of an ordinance for an easement for La Plata County to provide fiber utility service to the La Plata County Health Department at one hundred and eighty five Saddle Street. Eight point six point three, introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter seventeen, offenses, Article five, offenses relating to fraud, Section seventeen dash seven seventy six, obtaining goods, services, or money under false pretenses. That's set for September fourth, twenty twenty four. Eight point six point four is an introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter seventeen, offenses, Article two, offenses relating to administration of justice and order, Section seventeen dash twenty six, possession or use of marijuana prohibited, scheduled for September fourth, twenty twenty four. Eight point six point five is an introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirteen, licenses and business regulations, Article one, general business licenses, Section thirteen dash four, denial. And that's scheduled for September fourth, twenty twenty four. And eight point six point six is an introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirteen, licenses and business regulations, Article one, general business license, Section thirteen eight, suspension and revocation by the city, by the city manager. That's submitted by the Attorney's Office, and that's scheduled for September fourth, twenty twenty four. And there are no requests for excused absences.
Thank you. Quite a mouthful. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove items eight two two, item eight six one, and item eight six three through eight six six. So six three, six four, six five, six six.
Okay, do I have a motion? Or any others that need to be removed? Sorry. No motion.
So moved to move to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of Olivia, or Counselor Bosman's polls.
I'll second. Everything he pulled off, we're approving besides those. That makes sense? Or we're voting to approve. Okay, I'll second. And I have a roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
And Counselor Bosman's?
Yes.
Okay, item eight point two, or sorry, we're on item nine, items pulled from the consent agenda. The first item pulled from the consent agenda is eight point two point two, final reading of ordinance oh dash twenty twenty four dash zero zero one three, establishing city council rules of procedure. Counselor Bosman's, do you want to start?
I think normally you make a motion. I don't support this topic. So if someone wants to make a motion and second it.
Does anyone want to make a motion to?
I move to approve eight point two point two, the final reading of an ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirteen, establishing city council rules of procedures submitted by the City Manager's Office and City Attorney's Office.
I'll second. Council discussion.
I don't support this item. I've given my comments during the prior meeting, especially concerning is that it unnecessarily restricts current and future councils, councilors, to do their job, what they are elected for. And there's also confusing language in there that I don't think is adequate. So more details, if you want to hear it, two weeks ago.
Any other counselors? Okay, can I get a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi?
No.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman's?
No.
And Mayor Buell?
Yes.
That motion ties, and it would fail.
Okay, next item that was pulled from the consent agenda, item eight point six point one, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the leasing of city-owned property located at nineteen seventeen East Third Avenue to Head Start Durango four C Council Tri-County Head Start Program, September fourth, twenty twenty four, is the date of the that would be set. Sorry, gosh, I'm distracted. Do I have a motion?
So moves.
Okay.
Second?
Council discussion.
So I pulled this agenda item because I wanted to clarify a couple of things. And let's first start, this is for a public hearing and an introduction of ordinance. So I actually support this item as it will allow staff presentations to address a lot of the comments that were made on September fourth. Childcare is a serious issue for our community, and I think it's very important. I had it as a new business item that was supported by majority of council, but we we never made it to a study session or a regular meeting. But hopefully, this will be another step in the right direction. I wanted to thank the developer and the architect, as well as staff, to separate these two properties. And I also wanted to thank all the people in our community who spoke up, emailed, and communicated to us. I think the city has heard you and hopefully will do better, more transparent, more engagement, and moving forward on this and all future projects. Some of the clarifications I would like to see are the comments from the public, that it's indeed two separate projects, and only the new Head Start location, Track C, is under consideration with the first reading and public hearing next week. And that the letter of intent obviously gets reissued, and how parking issues will be addressed. And another one that I think is very interesting is that this is a thirty-year lease at a cost of a hundred dollars or a hundred and twenty dollars a year, a hundred dollars a month, or later mentioned, a hundred and twenty dollars a year. So there's an error in there, and which I assume is for the land. The current lease for Head Start was twenty five thousand dollars a year in twenty seventeen. So I assume that's going to be thirty thousand dollars. So if we give them thirty years of an annual lease for, let's say, a thousand dollars a year versus twenty five thousand dollars a year, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And obviously, one is a vacant property, I assume. So the questions I will have is, what are we getting for that lease? And what are we leasing? Who owned the building? And a key one that I think will be, that I look forward to hearing more about, is how do we assure that we treat all childcare facilities equal and fair? Does Head Start have a specific niche, or are they required to get a definite treatment? Will other facilities, childcare facilities, will be, will they be able to apply for a grant or money equivalent? So these are things that I would like to see during the public meeting in two weeks. So that's what I'm supporting. So that's where I'm stopping.
Thank you. Just a reminder, limited discussion for councilors on this item. It's supposed to just be about putting it on to talk about it at the next meeting, if that makes sense. Okay, great.
Maybe I could just get a point of clarification from the city manager. My understanding is that in order for something to change, you know, because we had we had tabled, so nothing can change, because council did not give any direction to change anything on that ordinance, if I'm if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that that's correct. And so for some of the people in the audience who are saying, why wasn't it updated or changed, is because the council did not vote for it, they did not vote against it, they actually voted to table it. So that's actually putting a pause on what the introduction of the ordinance was, which means that it gets forwarded to the next council meeting as it was. As they go into a first reading, if the council so chooses, they can make an amendment to the ordinance that could do with what as the public was asking regarding to do. But that's the reason it wasn't updated in between from staff, is because the council had made the motion to table the item, which means put it to the next agenda meeting was what we did. And when that comes tabled, it wouldn't be something that we would normally, that we would change. That'd be inappropriate, because you're tabling the item that was on for consideration.
So sounds like to me that if we end up not tabling it today, we move to introduce this ordinance on September fourth, that would allow us as a body to amend that that proposal, that that ordinance to reflect robust community input, correct?
Yes, you would amend that ordinance if that's what the council so chooses. And then it would come back again one final time at the meeting after that for final approval.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other comments? Okay, roll call.
Counselor Bosman's?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Yasi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item that was removed was eight point six point three, correct? I have for real, it's so bad. Introduction, okay, item eight point six point three, introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter seventeen, offenses, Article five. The Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter seventeen offenses, Article five offenses relating to fraud, section seventeen dash seven six, obtaining goods, services. Or money under false pretenses submitted by the city attorney. Um, as a reminder, this is limited discussion. It is putting it on the agenda to discuss for next time, but it, um, Mr. Jim Martin, if you would give us a little.
Jim Martin, I was very worried that I was not going to be able to speak at all during the session. So thank you. Actually, as you mentioned, and thank you, uh, these are, these are just introductions for, uh, four items in the municipal code to clean up some of our, um. Offenses, uh, and also business licensing, um, issues that we have in the code. So. Eight point six point three is just a cleanup of items. Basically, it's, um. Obtaining goods or, or services in town, kind of what we call theft. And originally, uh, it was in the code, it was set at, um, a limit of, you know, uh, theft of five, five hundred dollars. So if somebody had obtained goods that were five hundred dollars or less, they could be charged under municipal code. If it was over five hundred dollars, they had to be charged under, uh, and sent to county court. But we've raised, we want to raise that to a thousand dollars so that then they can be charged in, in municipal court. Um, and we can take care of that with municipal court.
Mayor, I think normally we have a motion, a second, and then.
Oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead. So I was just eager to explain.
Introduce an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter seventeen offenses, Article five offenses relating to fraud, section seventeen dash seven six, obtaining goods, services, or money under false pretenses.
Second.
Second, council discussion.
So I have just one little question.
Yes.
In the last, when were the last two cases? That you were aware of in the city of Durango, where we even have to bother with this, this kind of?
We have those probably every week.
Every week?
Yes.
That's very good.
And then eight point six point four is just.
Um, hang on, we'll.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
We'll make a motion, everyone, because you pulled them all. So that, that's what, yeah, total cleanup. But wait, first we have, anyone else want to say anything on this one? Okay, roll call.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman's?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Yasi?
Yes.
All right, uh, eight point six point four, introduction of ordinance amending in pertaining part the Durango Code and ordinances, Chapter seventeen offenses, Article two offenses relating to administration of justice and order. Section seventeen dash six possession or use of marijuana prohibited. Do I have a motion?
I move to introduce an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter seventeen offenses, Article two offenses relating to administration of justice and order, section seventeen dash twenty-six possession or use of marijuana prohibited.
Second. Council discussion.
I think maybe just have him explain what the code is.
Okay.
Thank you. It's just aligning the municipal code here with the state law that requires or, or makes it, um, illegal for folks in the city. To possess or use marijuana if they are under the age of twenty-one. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
And Counselor Bosman's?
Yes.
All right, eight point six point five, introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirteen licenses and business regulations, Article one. General business licenses, section thirteen dash four denial. Do I have a motion?
I move to introduce an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirteen licenses and business regulations, Article one general business licenses, section thirteen dash four denial.
I'll second. Okay, great. Council discussion?
Same, same question, if you want to give an update.
Thank you. This is, would, uh, clarify the municipal code so that if a, uh. Applicant in the city of Durango was applying for a business license and this applicant owed taxes to the city. For a different business license that, um, they'd have to pay, pay up their taxes before they could obtain a, a different business license.
Is that also something that's regular?
No, it does not happen that often, but it does happen from time to time. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman's?
Yes.
And Mayor Buell?
Yes. And last one, eight point six point six, introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part. The Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirteen dash business license regulations, Article one general business licenses, section thirteen dash eight suspension and revocation. By the city manager submitted by the city attorney. Do I have a motion?
I move to introduce an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirteen licenses and business regulations, Article one. General business licenses thirteen, section thirteen dash eight suspension and revocation by a city manager.
Council discussion or second, sorry, second, council discussion?
Uh, this is the same topic, I think. And I just, I brought these up because it seems that the change for a city manager to be able to deny business licenses, same as the last one. Based on taxes or unremitted due taxes. Is a bit, uh, powerful. Um. The, um. Yeah, no, I guess I'll leave it at there. It's okay. No, I, I have one question. I, I think this specific section. Has it been considered for update? Because there was a lot of issues in that, um. Chapter that I find, um. Vague or open for interpretation or questionable. Has it, has it been evaluated as a whole or?
It has been evaluated, but certainly when council gets to discuss it at the next council meeting, if there are questions or concerns. They can be brought to our office and we can evaluate those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other counselor? Okay, roll call.
Counselor Bosman's?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Counselor Yousef? Oh, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Yasi?
Yes.
Right, item ten, public hearings, there are no items under public ten, item eleven resolutions. Item eleven point one, resolution R dash twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four eight submitting to the register electors of the city. At the November fifth, twenty twenty-four election about issue and title concerning an extension of an expiring sales and use tax submitted by the city clerk's office. Um, Fay is virtual, is that?
That is correct, mayor and council. Fay Harmer, our city clerk, will be doing this presentation, but she is virtual today.
Sorry for the delay. I had to rejoin as a panelist. Um, Tom, if you would advance my slides, I would sure appreciate it. The item before you tonight, mayor and council, uh, is a resolution to approve the ballot language. For the possible election in two thousand and twenty-four for the reauthorization of the two thousand and five sales tax. Uh, next slide, please. The approval of this language, uh, is within the engaged and informed community goal, um, and definitely providing Elta outstanding services for the entire community. And next slide, please. The process so far, on August sixteenth, council directed staff and my office to move forward with the November twenty-four coordinated election. We have notified this county clerk that we wish to participate in that election and that IGA is awaiting final signatures from the county at this time. The, on August sixth, the council approved the signature on the IGA. Um, and again, we are just waiting for the county to finalize the signatures on that process. Next slide, please. The next step in the process for an election is to approve the ballot language. After that, we, our office would request pro and con statements from the general public regarding the ballot item and the specific language. The language inter packet tonight has been reviewed by the city attorney's office, has been reviewed by outside bond counsel. As well as the financial consultants, uh, regarding the, uh, possible remodel of the nine R building. The sub, deadline to submit responses to our department is September twentieth at noon. Those comments have to be summarized by our bond counsel to a limited five hundred words pro and con. And then submitted to the county no later than September twenty-third. Although this language could be approved at the next council meeting on September fourth. Approving it at this point in time would allow a greater period for the public to provide those pro and con statements between now and September twentieth. As opposed between September fourth and September twentieth. Uh, last slide, please. And the, uh, recommended motion is on your screen.
Thank you, Fay. I'm going to make a motion to table the, um. City ballot issue concerning reauthorization of the two thousand and five sales tax and, and to prepare it for the April twenty twenty-five election.
Second?
Council discussion?
Um, I, I'm happy to jump in. Um, the only thing I have to really to say is, you know. Um, a lot of community members have reached out and have some of those same concern that we're. Potentially behind the eight ball. And I would also say that we has a pretty big disinformation campaign going on over social media right now. Um, where members of our community are giving inaccurate and patently false statements about the O-five sales tax reauthorization. So. I think it's important to get in front of the, um, of these folks to ensure that we're able to communicate accurate information. Um, that's actually honest, uh, regarding the O-five sales tax. So I think being able to get in front of that, um, I think and make sure that everybody knows that. The, what's actually going on with the sales tax reauthorization, um, I think is really important.
Yeah, I'll make my comment. I asked, I was prepared for a different kind of scenario. I was. Under the impression that majority of council would pass this ballot language and in a way that's acceptable as well, because the voters would decide anyway. Um, so, but I'm going to make my case just because I can. I. I believe it makes sense to reauthorize a half cent sales tax for the post. Parks, Open Space and Trails, uh, a quarter cent going to that. We had an economic study for Parks and Rec which showed that every dollar we spend there pays itself back, I believe, two or threefold. So in a way, it's not even an expense and on top of it, uh, the benefits of Parks, Open Space and Trails facilities for our residents, communities. And visitors, so it's beneficial for all. I also would support a quarter cent for capital projects, but I have a problem with this one as we include a debt. Uh, increase to finance the nine R building renovations for a new police station and a new city hall. And I acknowledge that we absolutely need, need a new police station as the current one is so outdated and unfit for its use and has been for many years. The total cost for the nine R building is the loan of sixty-one, this is going to be numbers. Sixty-one million, which including repayment will cost hundred and twenty-three million plus. Approximately ten million from our existing funds and selling city ads, assets, bringing it to hundred and thirty-three million. Plus what we already spent for the purchase of the building and, and renovation for temporary offices. Bringing the total cost around hundred and fourteen million. That is city money. That is your money, money of our residents that we are planning to spend almost fifteen thousand dollars for each household. Even more than I estimated last, last meeting. And a very large part of that amount is not for the police station, but for the new city hall. Uh, but it's more convincing to emphasize and repeat the police station. And because everybody's, I think most people support that part. And sure, a renovated nine R building could be a beautiful asset to our city. It sure is a legacy project. And it would look good on a resume before people move on. But remember that we people that live and wish to continue living here will be paying for this for the next twenty-five to thirty years. And I had raised questions and concerns since a long time ago, some of them before the building was even bought. And these questions and concerns remain unanswered for the most part. They include the lack of clarity and, or contradiction about following process of council direction. Another one is that we never clearly evaluated different options. Just to give you an idea. The current police station could have been renovated at the, or not renovated, demolished and rebuilt and maybe at a cost of forty million. And that is just a ballpark number thrown out without study. The third one, which was a comment from our community as well, is that the financial advisory board was never been involved. And this is a quarter cent that goes pretty much to one project only, and we have many other projects that are needed. I think our community would some, would want some clarity and alternatives. And in the end, it may result the same, but at least with this motion, we have more time to inform and get feedback. We have lost a lot of time and the police station is urgent and has been for years. And one could argue that the police station is being held hostage, for lack of a better word, to drive a legacy project forward. This is very similar to what happened to the fire station. Who was in a similar position for many years with their outdated station. So I don't think we're, we have done our job or fiduciary duty. I hope we will by the end of April. And I, we, we serve our residents and community and our voters will ultimately decide. And on a separate note, this is associated with the ballot partially because a quarter cent goes to capital projects. And downtown next steps could fall under that umbrella. And I've heard some people throw out some numbers for downtown next steps in the order of twelve million. And I think we're looking closer to a hundred million, just so people are aware, when you see, uh, media numbers. Uh, hopefully that will be something at a certain point that comes forward. So thank you very much for tabling that item.
Um, I will chime in here. Um, I tabled this item. We had talked about the proper election for this to happen in for a while, for a while. And April was brought up a lot as a lot of the sales taxes we have passed have happened in April, city council elections, when we have our city council election. Um, with the change in the county potentially putting something on the ballot and the school district, I think it's a very smart move. I also really appreciate, uh, the advice of the former mayors and, um, Ms. Marbury, she always, um, has great advice. So. I did it for that. And I also did it like, uh, Counselor Woodruff said, which now I'm wondering if. Where we can see that these people are getting some misinformation from is, um. The people that are talking on Facebook and some community members about this going towards Durango next steps. It, and this increasing sales tax. There's been a couple things and I know Sweetie's been, um, online with me, um, in a couple forums. Just reiterating, this is not increasing sales tax. This is what we currently pay right now. In our current sales tax and we're just reauthorizing it. And so I just think that narrative needs to be more played out, more explained. And then it really needs to be clear as, um, it is. Um. And what council has agreed on is this is going towards, um, the police station and civic center. It is not going towards Durango next steps. City council has not funded Durango next steps. So just want to be very clear that that is, um, the path forward. So there's no misinformation out there and just making sure that we're just staying, you know, on track, positive with, um. The intention of council, um, in reauthorizing this. So can I have a vote?
Uh, mayor, if I, if I may, um, Mr. Martin can, can verify this, but I believe. That under Roberts rules, because council has already passed resolution two thousand and twenty-four forty-four. Um, putting an item on the ballot that it would have to be a motion to reconsider an item already approved. Because that resolution has already been approved by council. And Jim, maybe you can weigh in on that for me?
I believe that would be correct.
Um, so I need to make an amendment to my.
You'd need to make amendments.
Yeah, I think, I think. I think the proper motion is a motion to reconsider an item already approved and that item would be resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash zero zero four four. And then council would vote for or against that resolution again. So that resolution said, we're going to put it on the ballot. So if we choose not to put it on the ballot, if you voted against that, then it would not go on the ballot and. The original resolution would be moot. And if you voted for it, then it would stay on the ballot.
Okay, so I'm going to make an amendment to my motion and my amendment is I'm going to, um, redo the motion to reconsider. Um. The tw- uh, twenty-four dash zero zero four four. Correct?
That's correct.
No, it's a resolution on ordinance. Yeah.
It's a resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Council discussion?
I just want to make sure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot somehow, um, that we're still going to move forward with putting this up. Is this just going to take a new resolution further down the road, Fay, Jim?
Yes, yes.
Up in April?
We would do a new resolution, um, you know, before the April, there, there's separate deadlines for the April election. So we would go through a similar process where we would do a resolution, placing item on the ballot, then a separate resolution, signing the IGA and then move forward in that way.
I would agree with that. Thank you, Fay.
I would agree with that. Thank you, Fay.
I have a one little comment to clarify, um, what you said, Mayor Buell. And I'll quote from the ballot language, the of this older document that's no longer relevant. Fifty percent to finance capital improvements, including the payment of debt. So if the language, the way it's written passes, it could be any capital improvement, including the nine hour building renovation. That's the way I read it.
Okay. Any other? All right. Can I have a vote?
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Councillor Bossmans?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tam Yasi?
All right, moving along, eleven point two, resolution R dash twenty twenty four dash zero zero five zero to reconstitute the Community Relations Commission and replace resolution R dash twenty twelve dash zero zero two six.
Mayor, I think eleven point two.
Oh, I just read the whole wrong one. I need, I'm like just all of a sudden, I'm not even kidding. I need you guys, I'm getting old and I'm having to like do this when I'm reading. So I really do apologize. It happened today, like literally in the last two weeks. Okay. Eleven point two, resolution R dash twenty twenty four dash zero zero four nine to adopt the zero emission vehicle transition plan for transit. Sarah Hill and Tyler Hopkins, hello.
Great.
Um, answer, I'll check. Tyler Hopkins with me today from a firm called HDR and he's actually going to be walking us through uh, the bulk of this presentation, but this is a resolution to adopt the zero emission vehicle transition plan for transit. And it does support two different council goals or strategic plan goals, forgive me, the organizational stewardship and reliable infrastructure and community connectivity. So just a really quick project history before I hand it over to Tyler. Um, the governor, Governor Polis signed an executive order in twenty nineteen that supports a statewide transition to zero emission vehicles or ZEVs um, for all medium and heavy duty fleet by the year twenty fifty. So then in twenty twenty one, city council adopted the Durango electric vehicle readiness plan and that was in coordination with LPEA and a number of other community organizations. Um, so that sets a goal of replacing one hundred percent of city fleet through a phased transition by twenty fifty. Um, the goal of the EV readiness plan is consistent with this Colorado state goals that were reestablished in the twenty twenty three plan. Uh, so this is not a cheap endeavor endeavor to transition to electric vehicles, but the federal bipartisan infrastructure law supports two grant programs that fund ZEV transit fleet transit fleet replacements and transitions. And that is the bus and bus facility competitive program and the low or no emissions, uh, program. The bill does require by statutory provision that any application for these funding sources related to ZEVs has to have a ZEV transition place in place in order to apply for the grant funding. So just to restate that, adopting a ZEV transition plan is required to be eligible to apply for grant funding, um, to meet these state and local goals. So last year we were awarded funding to help us develop this transition plan at no cost to the city and we hired HDR uh, to develop our plan. They included technology and fleet recommendations, a detailed analysis and modeling of our routes and fleet needs, a financial analysis and phased implementation plan to meet all of our goals. So our project team consisted of transportation, um, sustainability and fleet staff as well as staff representation from LPEA as well. So they've had a partnership with us through this project. So now I am going to hand it over to Tyler. This is a lot of, of information that we're about to present to you, but we did want to make sure that you have a lot uh, or have enough information, um, about the recommendations and considerations that went into the development of this plan to adopt the resolution. Tyler?
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, like Sarah said, my name's Tyler Hopkins. I'm here with HDR. Um, really appreciate all of you having me here, uh, taking fifteen minutes out of your data, listen to me go on about electric vehicles. Um, Sarah, you took a couple of my context bullets. So, uh, like Sarah said, the Colorado twenty twenty three EV plan does set that goal for a hundred percent zero emission vehicles in transit fleets by twenty fifty. Uh, there's also a intermediate goal for one thousand, uh, transit vehicles to be zero emission by twenty thirty, which is only five years away. Uh, a large amount of funding right now is available for this and like Sarah referenced, uh, you do need a fleet transition plan in order to leverage that funding. Um, there's a lot of folks out there that are going through this as well, a lot of similar concerns in, you know, towns all across the country, um, or world even. Um, and this is kind of the point where I want to build on this last bullet a little bit. Um, I always introduce myself as not trying to push any one technology. I'm not a zealot for anything. I just, I am passionate about it. I do drive an electric vehicle. Um, but what we're here to do is really explore the feasibility of doing that in Durango. Um, and if it is feasible, uh, how we can make that happen. Um, the goal here is really just to position everybody here to be able to leverage that funding if and when the time comes. So the current fleet that Durango Transit operates has eighteen internal combustion engine vehicles. So those are vehicles that are powered by gas or diesel. Um, these vehicles operate for long periods of time and over long distances. So sometimes they're going a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy five miles a day. Um, and let me move this really quick so I can see this. They're also operating in very cold weather and there's mountainous terrain. Both of those things will reduce the range of a zero emission vehicle, especially about our electric vehicle. Um, and that's something that we need to account for as we look towards this transition. So I want to note some of the benefits of of zero emission vehicles. We've got zero tailpipe emissions, which is just cleaner air around town, quieter operations. Uh, they're likely to have lower costs for fueling and charging, which can depend on local fuel and electricity rates, but here we did find that to be true. Um, they're also likely to incur lower maintenance costs, which we also found to be true when we did our financial analysis. And there was a public comment earlier that referenced there is a monetary value to some of these things that our financial analysis, when we get to it focuses on kind of budgetary implications, but there really are financial, you know, benefits to, uh, improving some of these conditions in town. Uh, some of the challenges though, I think we're all familiar. They have higher capital costs. They cost more to buy. Um, there's obviously infrastructure you have to install. Um, they do have a shorter driving range. Uh, and then that the cold weather, the steep grades, the impacts based on those. Um, the batteries will degrade over time. Uh, they usually have a lifespan of about ten years. Uh, and then it can require some significant upgrades, whether it's power, uh, anything else that you might need to do to make that infrastructure work. So a really quick overview on charging, um, we're going to talk about mostly two of these types, but I want to give a quick overview on all three. Depot charging is probably what everybody's most familiar with. It's also what you see for public charging. So we've got level two chargers that are a bit slower. Uh, and we've got DC fast chargers that are going to give you a pretty quick top off. We've also got conductive charging, which is also fast charging. Uh, we call it pantograph charging as well. Um, essentially that arm lowers down from the, from what you see overhead and connects to the vehicle and charges it. And then the third option, which I think is the coolest, is inductive charging and that is you put a pad in the ground. It does not stick out of the ground. It has really no aesthetic impacts. And the vehicle, the bus simply pulls over it, aligns itself with it and it charges, uh, through an electromagnetic field. Um, pretty cool. Sounds futuristic. Um, so when we looked into this, the first step of the project was kind of to compare battery electric and hydrogen fuel cell technologies. What we found is there are quite a few battery electric vehicle options uh, that match the vehicle types in Durango's fleet right now. Um, but there are very few fuel cell, hydrogen fuel cell, electric vehicles, um, especially for the cutaway vehicles, which are kind of those smaller buses that you see drive around town. Uh, there aren't any options for those right now and we don't see the market for that really expanding in the near future. Um, electric, yeah, battery electric vehicle charging is also compatible with the existing electric grid, whereas hydrogen availability here in Western Colorado and a lot of the country is pretty limited right now. So we think that, uh, fuel cell electric vehicles are likely to come with pretty big drawbacks here in Durango. Um, there's that limited vehicle market, the hydrogen availability is not really there and they do have even higher costs often, uh, than battery electric buses. Um, so we came to the recommendation that battery electric vehicle technology is the best thing to pursue here in Durango. Um, the vehicles are less expensive, already compatible with the electric grid and it should just be easier to implement. Um, but as I noted before, one thing we have to consider and I'll show you what this looks like is they do not go as far as, you know, having, having a gas tank in your car. So to figure out exactly what we would need in terms of charging, how these buses would operate, uh, we took real world data that we were provided by Durango Transit, uh, and simulated that. We have a tool that we use to look at a fixed route transit service, um, that can kind of identify different charging strategies to make that work. Uh, we did look at extreme temperatures, uh, both hot and cold. So whether you're running the air conditioning or you know, blasting the heat all day on a ten degree day. Um, and we compared diesel and electric heating options. Those are both choices. So we, it could be all electric. You can also have an auxiliary diesel heater, um, that would actually use diesel. So it wouldn't be fully zero emission, uh, but very close to it. Uh, we also assume just one thing we always assume is that we're not, the manufacturer will state their battery capacity. Obviously, if you used all of it, you would hit zero and you would stall on the road. So we always knock some off. Um, so it's a little bit conservative, uh, but we just want to make sure that you're not, you know, these buses aren't stopped, uh, on the side of the street in the middle of service. So when we run these, uh, when we run these simulations, we found that the trolley routes, uh, that can be operated using battery electric vehicles and they can rely on electric heating. So fully zero emission and we think that that's a, that has really good potential for the initial transition phase here. Um, if you look at the, the graphs on the, the graphics on the right of that, that top graphic, trolley one and trolley two, uh, basically the ones without the blue bars, uh, just focus on they're very green, which means that it's very good. Um, so they work pretty well. Um, what we did find is that those smaller buses would need to swap out in the middle of the day, uh, just with only, you know, short ten minute kind of top off windows to charge in between uh, laps around town. Uh, even with diesel heating, we saw that one swap would still be needed. Uh, then we talked to the folks at Durango Transit here, uh, and found that those drivers and their buses take thirty minute breaks once a day. And so we can leverage that by having those buses actually charge for thirty minutes and that removes the need to buy any additional vehicles, to do any vehicle swapping and that can just be done at the transit center. So then there's the micro transit and the paratransit fleet. So those on demand services, uh, the micro transit fleet is good to go. Um, all of those vehicles can complete the mileage and the hours that they operate today. Uh, with only the level two slower overnight charging though, uh, that paratransit fleet would need to expand by one vehicle. Um, that's probably gonna, that's going to mean you need storage for another vehicle and it might require some expansion of the facility and things like that. But then we looked at that, that break kind of again, um, and it, when they can recharge for a slightly extended period of time in the middle of their service, you also won't need to buy any additional vehicles there. So what we came to is this recommendation where we start with that trolley fleet and part of that is that it's feasible for electrification already. Part of that, I think, is that it's, it's visible. It's, it's a good sign of the commitment to zero emission, uh, this transition. Then from there, we move to the micro transit and the paratransit fleets as that technology continues to improve. And then we move on to those mini buses. So the other five routes outside of the trolley. Um, we have, you know, that's where we put in additional chargers of the transit center at the yard. Um, but what we want to do there is leverage improvements that we expect to happen in battery capacities in the hopes that this gets a little bit easier to implement, you know, five years down the line. And then there's the administrative fleet, which is just a couple of vehicles. Um, and we just have those, they have the smallest benefits. They're not necessarily as visible. They're not traveling as far. So fewer emissions reductions. They can be replaced at any time. Uh, they are feasible to replace tomorrow if that, you know, was desirable. Um, but just, uh, not as visible, I suppose, to the public. So when we look at the transit center, here's an aerial of the transit center, uh, we have two, so two two hundred and fifty kilowatt on route chargers. What that means is we would have two charging systems. Each one of those is going to supply two charging pads. So you actually see four of these blue boxes here. Um, there were actually four charging pads, one in each of four out of five of the gates there. Um, what that allows is a little bit of interoperability. I struggle with that word, between gates for future charge, uh, for future changes. Um, should service patterns change? Should buses shuffle around where they stop at the transit center? We can still accommodate that. We've also got plug-in DC fast chargers, which are, you know, commonly what you'll see in a parking lot. Um, that's for the minibus and paratransit fleet to make sure that they can recharge a little bit in the middle of their shift. And then we've got a peak load of six hundred and seventy kilowatts, which might not mean too much to folks. Um, but we did coordinate with La Plata, uh, LPEA throughout this, uh, to make sure that these are things that we can accommodate. Um, at the city yard, we would have a one DC fast charger that would serve all the trolleys. Um, we'd also have, uh, eleven level two chargers and that would just provide overnight charging for the rest of the vehicles. The two biggest things here are those orange boxes. So one thing that needs to happen is that existing, there's an existing shed uh, where the trolleys and a couple of the minibuses park, uh, that's going to need to be enclosed and heated. I don't know if anybody paid attention to the news over the winter, but people were having a lot of problems getting their cars to charge, uh, quickly. Um, and so this makes sure that when that bus goes and plugs in, it actually charges full speed. Uh, we also construct a new shed, um, that could, that, that'll accommodate the trolleys at first, but also can serve any future fleet expansion, any additional service that gets added. Um, and here we have a much lower peak load of two hundred and ninety kilowatts. So the financial plan, this is probably what everybody's here for. Uh, we tried to come up with a strategy that would evenly spread costs over the next X number of years. Uh, we don't want there to be huge spikes where you budget one million dollars one year and then seven the next year. We're trying to make it a little bit easier to plan for. Um, we also wanted to avoid overlap. So if you're still replacing your last round of vehicles, we don't want to start introducing new ones and then have you have to buy ten vehicles in a single year. Uh, all of this is based on existing operations, um, all existing financial data, the amount of money uh, Durango Transit spends on maintenance and fueling. Um, and then I'm going to show you on the next slide, we've got replacement schedules and I just want to note that those are based on the, uh, the purchase year of the vehicle. Uh, not necessarily the year it gets delivered, kind of skipping to that bottom bullet. Right now we're seeing some supply chain issues. Um, it can be tough to get a via, a battery electric vehicle delivered in the same year that you order it. Um, so I just want to note that this plan is saying this is when the purchase would be made. And then from there, it may be the next year that the vehicle actually shows up. Um, what we did though is we prioritized these by operational feasibility. That's that transition strategy slide that I showed earlier. Uh, we would shift over to an eight year replacement cycle over time. Uh, the federal transit administration requirements actually do say that you need to keep that vehicle for at least eight years in order to receive funding for its next replacement. Um, so we don't want to have, right now it's a five year replacement cycle, but we don't want to have you get to five years and then not be eligible for funding. Um, the schedule also leverages those technology improvements I was talking about for the minibuses and, uh, some of those fixed routes. Uh, we do, in order to make that happen, we do buy a couple more gasoline powered vehicles in the next couple of years. Uh, between now and twenty twenty nine, there's a few of those purchases in there. Uh, that's just going to make it so that the next time those vehicles are due, we think the technology should be there to make it work. So kind of just summing up the infrastructure really quick, transit center, we've got two of those inductive chargers, four pads. Uh, they just, two pads get installed at once, two pads get installed later. Uh, at the city yard, just a charger gets installed essentially every time a new battery electric vehicle gets purchased. Um, the number of chargers isn't actually, it's, it's not equal to the number of vehicles in the fleet. It's how many vehicles are active every day. Um, so we're not putting a bunch of extra chargers where three buses sit there all day and don't actually have to use them. Uh, we're just putting in what needs to be there. Um, the last piece is that infrastructure upgrades, anything utility wise, running new wiring, anything like that. We tend to recommend that that gets done as much as possible upfront, uh, just to avoid having to say dig up the transit center every year to install another charger or something like that. So we estimated the overall cost, this was over a sixteen year period. We estimated a cost of thirty seven point seven million dollars. Then, then we take that and we return that back to today's dollars. So we discount those numbers based on guidance from the White House. And we found that the estimated cost in twenty twenty four dollars is about thirty million. Uh, those high costs are largely due to the infrastructure upgrades and then also the high purchase price, right now at least of battery electric vehicles. Um, but as I referenced earlier, there are some operations and maintenance savings there uh, for fueling and routine maintenance. We see a savings of about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. So then we ran just one more analysis, uh, to compare the existing fleet. So if, if we stuck with the existing fleet for the rest of time versus transitioning over to battery electric vehicles. For this one, we looked at two life cycles of the fleet and we just kind of considered a pretty rapid transition over so that we could show what it looked like once you had a fully electric fleet compared to sticking with the gasoline powered vehicles. Um, again, both of them were, uh, evaluated based on existing operating profiles and financial data. I'll just show this graph so you can kind of see how, uh, they go up relatively in line with each other. You've got your higher vehicle purchase prices, but you've also got your savings in fueling and maintenance. Um, but you do see when you get to the end, after two full life cycles of the fleet, there is about a five million dollar difference in those costs. I think it, it's about nineteen percent. The last piece I want to talk about, we made it through the hard part. So the last piece I want to talk about is workforce development. I think something that everybody's always afraid of when we transition to a new technology is that folks are going to get left behind. And we don't want to let that happen. So right now, the staff at Durango Transit maintains all the, I suppose city staff maintains all the city on vehicles at the service yard. There are some specific trainings that'll be needed to work on battery electric vehicles and chargers. And a lot of that is because those batteries are high voltage. It can be dangerous if you don't know what you're doing. So we just want to make sure that the folks at Durango Transit are able to stay on board the whole time. They have the skills that they need to work on the new technologies. So we do have, there are a lot of safety standards out there. The NFPA 70E, that might not mean anything to anybody, but they do define all of our safety standards. There's also a lot of organizations that offer this specific training. The Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Training Program, the Society of Automotive Engineers, they both offer certifications for mechanics to make sure that they can work on these things. And then just a couple of recommendations that we came to, to wrap this up for workforce development is to integrate any new curricula into the existing training program, just kind of build on what you already have. Collaborate with the manufacturers to tell, tell them what training you need and they can provide that. They can make that happen. You just kind of have to be clear about what you're looking for from them. Remain familiar with the national, state and local standards. Regularly update those plans. Technology keeps changing. So just make sure you're up to date. Creating a workforce development committee so that management, staff are all on the same page throughout all of this, this whole transition. And then kind of what I mentioned earlier, defining those training needs as you talk to these manufacturers and when you procure a charger, tell them what you need and that can certainly happen. So do a really quick summary and then any questions and I'll turn it back over to Sarah for the actual resolution. The transportation industry at large is shifting over to zero emission vehicle technologies. There's a lot of funding available today to make it happen and we don't necessarily know what that funding looks like in five or 10 years. So now's, you know, kind of the time to, if you want that funding, it's, you know, sooner rather than later. At some point, it'll probably run out as we get a lot more electric vehicles out there. But for right now, it is guaranteed. We recommended at the start of the project that battery electric vehicles would be best here in Durango. We recommend that the trolley fleet gets replaced first, both for operational feasibility and visibility. In today's dollars, we saw a cost of about $30 million that would be incurred over a 16 year period. Annual operations and maintenance, maintenance costs though are much lower. And of course, comprehensive training is going to be needed to make sure that staff aren't left behind.
That was quite a
I know, I'm sorry.
All right.
It's like I have 15 minutes I gotta talk.
Thank you for all the research and all, everything you did. I appreciate it. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve resolution R 2024-49, adopting the zero emission vehicle transition plan for transit to guide the electrification of the Durango Transit fleet.
Excellent council discussion.
I would just say that holy smokes, the, the city council packet that we received. I, I was blown away by how much detail and, and thought about all of the different, you know, the workforce development aspect of this. I never really thought of until you bring it up and that, that's such a critical component of all this. And I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but I remember reading them. But what is that, that delta between how much fuel consumption that we were using previous of a diesel or gasoline to what that would be, you know, how that would be negated? How much money we're spending on, on the electrification process? Do, could you remind us what that is?
It was, so $360,000 a year combined between it's fueling versus electricity and then also the maintenance savings. There's a breakdown in the plan. I cannot remember the exact number, but $360,000 a year is what we see as the savings.
Okay. That's not insignificant. So
I would love $360,000 a year.
Yeah, I'm, this was really well done and, you know, I'm hopefully we can move forward and I look forward to seeing how this all takes shape over time. So thank you for your time.
Of course. I appreciate it.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm not sure you know, but I'm an environment consultant and I'm really committed to sustainability and environment and addressing climate change. I think this country and this state, we're definitely doing our best to catch up or to address it. I, I have a specific question for you. I looked at the electrical fleet, fleet transition schedule and if I'm correct, reading this correctly, there's a total of 36 vehicles being replaced up until 2036. Is that correct or?
Yes, that, that comparative analysis, where we looked at two life cycles of the fleet. So it would be 18 vehicles. The 18 existing vehicles being replaced by battery electric and then those being replaced by another battery electric. So 36 vehicle purchases, but it stays at an 18 vehicle fleet.
And the $30 million estimate, for what period of time was that?
That was the 16 year period.
So let me see, is that 16? That's not the same. That's 12.
Yeah.
Anyway, so we get about for, for that, for $30 million, we're assuming what, 40, 44 vehicle changes?
The $30.2 million would be the 16 year period replacing those 18 vehicles.
Okay, so 36, yeah. Maybe I misread it. I mean, we have to do it. I think we have no choice. But if you calculate it back per vehicle, it's not, it comes at a cost. And how do you measure that? So that's a tough one. I still think we should move in that direction, obviously. I think hopefully we'll get a lot of opportunities with grand money from the state and federal as this proceeds. I think not doing it will basically allow that taxpayer money to go other communities that are doing it. So in a way, with the political system and climate, that's either you take advantage of it or you don't. And at the same time, we address climate change and electrify our fleet. So, thank you.
Oh, sorry. It, it sounds really expensive. I mean, have we figured out what our yearly ridership is to spend like $32 million? Have we figured out those numbers yet? I mean, is it really worth it at this point? I, I understand the sustainability when you look at the price stat is pretty steep.
It is expensive. Yeah, we haven't, that's not really a comparison that we made because it doesn't tell us too much about the value of the transit service and the cost of electrifying. It kind of is what it is in the, in the scheme of things, but we, we serve 425,000 rides a year. And in order to meet the goals of electrifying our fleet, I think as it's been stated, it does come at a, at a fairly high cost.
All righty. That was just my initial take on it, but I do appreciate your presentation. I thought it was very thorough. So thank you.
I'll just add, I remember it was like right when I got elected to council that we adopted the plan to fully electrify by 2050. Is that what it was? Yeah. And so it's nice to see because sometimes we make those decisions and we say go and then we have other things going on. And so we don't, you know, and it takes time to obviously do all that research and figure it out. So I just want to say it's nice to like see the needle moving that we're actually making progress. Yes, it's expensive, but we knew it was going to be expensive. And there's a cost of these things. So I appreciate the thoroughness and I appreciate the hard work, Sarah. So thank you very much for continuing on with council's goals. Can I have a vote?
Mayor Protem Yazi?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
And Councillor Bossmans?
Yes.
All right. Now we will have item 11.3, Resolution R dash 2024 dash 0050 to reconstitute the Community Relations Commission and replace Resolution R dash 2012 dash 0026 submitted by Community Engagement with Ms. Clancy Nixon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I promise mine won't be so data focused, I suppose. I don't know how it could possibly be. My name is Clancy Nixon. I am the Community Engagement Specialist for the city. And I am here to present a resolution to reconstitute the Community Relations Commission and replace it with the Cultural and Community Relations Commission, Community and Cultural Relations Commission. This is in support of our engaged and informed community strategic goal. So the newly crafted purpose would be the Community and Cultural Relations Commission is an advisory board that assists with supporting an environment in which our diverse community members feel valued and heard when they interact with the city of of Durango as an organization. The CCRC will help create a welcoming setting for historically disadvantaged groups that encourages participation and builds trust and collaboration. The CCRC works to build new relationships with community leaders and organizations, celebrate Durango's diverse cultural communities and cultivate meaningful and authentic engagement. The updated charge would be to build city of Durango relationships and partnerships with underrepresented groups in the community, serve as community liaisons between underrepresented groups and the city of Durango, help the city of Durango to increase the awareness and understanding of the needs of our community members through positive cooperative partnerships and two-way communication. Develop and plan an annual cultural heritage or resource sharing event for the city of Durango and review, recommend and promote programs that recognize cultural diversity in the community. What the membership would look like is we would have up to seven members on the commission. They would be appointed by city council and they would be residents of the Durango area. The reason I said Durango area and I'm presenting on Durango areas that a lot of our underrepresented groups do not necessarily live in the city proper. They would be eligible to serve two consecutive two-year terms. The consideration of the appointment of members would, shall provide equal access and opportunity to serve on the commission to all historically disadvantaged groups represented in our community, including but not limited to the following. Black or African Americans, Latina or Hispanic individuals, Native Americans and Indigenous people, Asian Americans, members of the LGBTQ plus community, individuals living with a disability, neurodiverse individuals and youth members between the ages of 18 and 25. The Community Engagement Specialist would be the staff liaison. The history of the Community Relations Commission as it stands now, it was created in 2012 or 2012. It was originally charged with fielding complaints from the community and offering mediation. It's been on pause since November 2022. The needs of the city have evolved since 2012. In our external feedback report that we received after doing a robust community engagement with a bunch of stakeholders that helped guide our strategic plan, the city scored a 6.56 out of 10 across all our stakeholder groups and the participants' level of satisfaction with our cultural diversity and inclusivity. The updated focus is focusing on relationship building and greater awareness of diverse needs of all our community members and really putting a focus on that bridge building. So my recommendation to the city council is to reconstitute the Community Relations Commission to the Community and Cultural Relations Commission and replace Resolution R 2012-26 with Resolution R 2024-50. Questions?
Do I have a motion?
Could we put that back up on the slide?
Go back a slide. Sorry.
I move to reconstitute the Community, Community Relations Commission to the Community and Cultural Relations Commission and replace Resolution R 2012-26 with Resolution R 2024-50.
Second.
Council discussion.
Yeah, I'm going to make a comment here. I, I think it's great and I support this, but I'm reflecting on the last three years and if you know the history and the way we treated the CRC over the past three years, you will also understand how disappointing we have been. I remember clearly how two years ago, the city was going to put on hold the CRC for a couple of months and we were going to combine it in that time with the city's, the city's DIF, DEI, Diversity Equity Inclusion Efforts in the CRC with the NINR and I believe Fort Lewis College, yeah, two years ago. But, and I also want to use this opportunity to recognize the previous CRC members and all they have accomplished, including the fact that they worked on the land acknowledgement, which I think you took over and many other issues that have, have been implemented. So I just wanted to have that on the record because I think we didn't do a good job on at the time before your time.
Any other comments? I'll just chime in. The original, when the CRC was put on pause, the idea was for it to become a community. It was, because there was, it was so intertwined with NINR and Fort Lewis College and there was business district stuff. And the city manager's office did attempt at that to make that happen and no other entity really took it on with us. And so that is why it fell through and I'm super glad you're bringing it back up and that you've worked through a process to make it even more beneficial to what, to like the city needs and to fit within the city versus that like outline effort with the other entities. So thank you very much for that. Can I get a vote?
Mayor Protem Yazi?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Buell?
Yes. Pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bonds Sealing Allocation Act for future multifamily housing projects within the city of Durango. And we have Dreya.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Dreya Reza, Housing Coordinator with Community Development. And I'm going to be doing the presentation for a resolution electing to carry forward at the city of Durango's 2024 State of Colorado Private Activity Bonds for future multifamily housing projects within the city of Durango. Some of you might be familiar with PABs. For those of you who aren't, I will provide a brief overview before getting into the history of it. So in Colorado, the Department of Local Affairs through the Division of Housing is the administrator of PABs. Colorado law requires that 50% of the volume cap goes to statewide authorities. This includes Colorado Housing Finance Authority, also known as CHAFa and Colorado Agricultural Development Authority. Private Activity Bonds are a special class of tax exempt bonds that benefit private non-governmental borrowers that can be issued by states, local governments or housing authorities. The benefits of PABs are that the interest paid to the bondholders is exempt from federal income tax, which results in a lower borrowing cost for eligible projects or a lower interest, lower mortgage interest rate for single family bonds. PABs are provided to local governments and they're adjusted annually based on population and a state allocation formula. I would also like to mention that examples of eligible projects include new construction or acquisition, rehabilitation for low to moderate income people, as well as single family mortgage revenue bonds to low to moderate income people as well. And so with PABs, we have several uses as well as carry forward options that we need to make a determination by annually before September 15th. Those include option one, issue your volume cap to a specific PAB project. Option two, assign your volume cap to another government or housing authority to assist with their qualified project. Option three, assign your cap to another issuer such as CHAFa to assist with qualified projects for single family programs. Option four, relinquish bond volume cap to the statewide balance. In this situation, all relinquished bond cap will be awarded to other projects in the state through a competitive process that's done before the calendar year. And then option five, carry forward your volume cap for up to the next three years until you have accumulated a significant amount to be issued towards a project. So moving on to PAB allocation history. In 2020, the city became eligible to receive PABs and the city approved a resolution to assign the first ever PABs to assist with the refinance and rehabilitation of Tamaran Square Senior Housing Complex, which is a 68 unit affordable housing project in Durango. In 2021, the city approved a resolution to carry forward the city's PABs for future housing projects within the city of Durango. Excuse me. The, in 2022, In 2022, the city approved a resolution to transfer the 2021 PABs and the 2022 PABs to allocate those to the resident at Durango, also known as the Best Western Motel Conversion for Affordable Housing Purposes. And in 2023, the city approved a resolution to also transfer PABs to support the residence at Durango project. For 2024, staff is recommending that city council carry forward the city's 2024 PAB allocation for future multifamily housing projects that will be utilized within the City of Durango. I would also like to mention that there are four projects that have been identified and they're currently being reviewed. That will come before you at a later time for 2025 consideration. And I will thank you for your time, and I will answer any questions if you have any.
Excellent, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution R 2024, electing to carry forward the City of Durango's 2024 State of Colorado Private Activity Bonds allocation for future multifamily housing projects within the City of Durango pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bonds Sealing Allocation Act. That's why I don't do these things.
And it's 2024-51 for the record.
Second.
Perfect. Council discussion?
I think it makes sense to carry forward, and I look forward to the projects that you identify, the city will identify, on sending these opportunities and financing methods to. Thank you.
Can I get a roll call?
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Yasi?
Yes.
All right, moving on, there's nothing under Item 12, First Consideration of Ordinances. Item 13, Public Comment on Non-A agenda Items. Can I have the video?
Public comment is encouraged on city-related matters. Matters of international political controversy, ideological or religious beliefs, or individual conviction are outside the scope of this forum. Please note, you must sign up prior to the mayor calling the item on the agenda. Signing up after the item is called will result in your name not being called to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your full name, your city-related topic, and if you are a resident of the City of Durango. Make your comments directly to the council. Do not expect a response from the council or staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person unless modified by council. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Comments must be specific to city matters. Profanity, hate speech, derogatory remarks, or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of order by the chair, and any remaining time will be forfeited by the speaker. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order. Only a majority vote of the council can modify time limits.
All right.
And first up, we have Lisa Ray, followed by Sharon Engelhardt.
All right. I'm Lisa Ray. I am a resident of Durango. And I am here to talk about sustainability. I wrote a letter to you guys last week, I believe, about my concerns that the resolutions that were passed by city council in 2019 regarding our greenhouse gas reduction emissions, greenhouse gas emissions reductions, and our renewable energy goals are not on track to be met by 2030. Those are our intermediate goals. We have, excuse me, we have goals in those resolutions to be met by 2050. If we can't meet those intermediate goals of 2030, then we certainly can't meet the 2050 ones. And I have a great deal of concerns about that. I believe that sustainability needs to be our number one concern. We need to be a sustainable community in all areas. And I described some of my concerns in my letter. I'm concerned that we are not meeting those two specific goals concerning sustainability and the greenhouse gas emissions and the renewable energy goals. But I have a suggestion. And this might be even relevant to the transportation, presentation that we had tonight. I have something to suggest. Can I give you, can I approach you? This is called a green revolving fund or a sustainability revolving fund. There are many communities in our country that have utilized these funds to meet their sustainability goals. And there are two examples here of communities that have used those. These are found on the U.S. Department of Energy website, and it has details about the process and how that is carried out. So that's one of my suggestions that I think can be useful. We can take our franchise fee funds, which are actually a fee paid on electricity usage to the city and seed that fund with those franchise fee funds, which are about $1 million a year almost, which these funds do need seed money. So I would appreciate it if you would take a look at those and consider that.
Wrap up. The time's up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And next is Sharon, excuse me, Sharon Engelhardt, followed by Gerald Weiss.
Hi, my name is Sharon Engelhardt. I'm a lifelong resident of the Four Corners, specifically Durango. Grew up here. Moved away for a little while, and then three years ago came back to Durango. And in reconnecting with a lot of family and friends in the area where I told them where I was living, they would say, oh, we don't go there anymore. And I'd say, well, why? And they say, because it's too crowded and there's no parking. So I was really interested when the Next Step process came up and seemed to be so controversial, what the background was. I took time to acquaint myself with all the information that's available on the website, which I thought was extremely well done, and I really respect the effort to try to create open public spaces, to create walkable spaces, to honor the history of bicycling in this city and county, which my dad was a part of. But I don't understand why the city council seems to have continuously for the last 30 years jumped over or around the problem of parking. And it's, it just feels as an outsider, and I know I'm not fully informed, that you're still jumping over the basic problem of parking. In the study that you did, you looked at Grand Junction, you looked at Frisco, you looked at San Luis Obispo. Grand Junction has a parking garage. Frisco has a 24/7 parking garage. San Luis Obispo has three parking garages. The problem is parking. And it just seems like we're not going to be able to do the creative, beautiful, wonderful, open space, public-centered things that you'd like to do until you solve this problem of parking. And I know you've said that the Transit Center solves that problem, so I thought, okay, I'm uninformed. I walk a lot. I'll go down there and I'll stand there and I'll look at different times of the day. I use the Transit. It's wonderful. I love it. But I don't see that taking 50 slots out of downtown and adding them to the spaces that are available at the Transit Center is going to solve any parking problems. I think the problem is parking. And I just asked the city council, take a look at the problem that you're falling in love with. You know, are you falling in love with making the sidewalks bigger, creating more chaos downtown, really not listening to the business owners who have, by majority, said, please don't do this? Is that the problem? Or is the problem that you just want to make something look pretty down there and ignore the problem of parking? Thanks.
Next up is Gerald Weiss, and that'll be followed by Holly Lee.
Gerald Weiss, I live at 910 Oak Drive. Been a resident here for 45 years. And my remarks are on Next Step, and they're directed to the people in this room who are in favor of the ill-conceived Next Step project. I have some advice that was given to me years ago. I'll pass it on to you. Be careful of what you wish for. It may come back to haunt you. Once your wishes become concrete on Main Avenue, it will be hard to correct your mistake. And we, the citizens of Durango, will have to live with your mistakes for a long, long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is Holly Lee, followed by Sweetie Marbury.
Hi, I'm Holly Lee, and I'm not a resident of Durango, but I have a business in Durango on Main for 29 years. And it's a business that allows a one-on-one conversation with customers quite regularly every day. And I'm not here to tell you all the things that you already know about no parking and the dangers of narrowing that street and so forth and so on, and you'll hear more on the 27th. So, but I'm here to relay to you some of the comments from people not only from Durango, but also from around the world. They come into my store from all parts of the world, as well as this country. And the one comment always made is that it is such an unique town. It's friendly. It has a hometown feeling. Some of the, one customer said, it's so nice to come to a town that's not trying to become a downsized, upscale little city. This is what your town represents to the world. It isn't looking for another Aspen or all these other cities that have done this. They can see them everywhere. They want to see the originality of the West, and they love it. And many of them move here, and many of them retire here. So give it a thought when you do make these, try to make these changes for this town. Like the previous spokesman said, the future's going to have to live with it. And it might not be a good move. Thank you.
And up next is Sweetie Marbury, followed by Kelly Hahn.
My name is Sweetie Marbury, and I'm commenting on Next Steps and the businesses that do not have parking in front of their stores. Businesses who have survived the Gold King, 416, COVID, no employees, and now redesigning Main Street, it makes the city council look like you are not business-friendly. And the CBD generates a lot of sales tax that fuels your budget. By eliminating parking, shoppers and employees are at a disadvantage. We all understand the need for improvements of sewer and water on Main Street, but that is a separate issue from redesigning Main Street. By widening sidewalks and eliminating parking, parking and bull belts without a price tag is even more confusing to the public. Pushing parking by employees into neighborhoods seems very unfair to the neighborhoods. They should not have to solve and shoulder your parking problems. I work nights downtown at a restaurant, and no, I did not park at the Transit Center. It was too scary for me to walk at night. I worry about narrow lanes with extended sidewalks and a truck unloading in the middle lane and me trying to get out of a car. I worry about snow removal with those extended sidewalks and more narrow lanes. The community needs to attend September 24th at the Public Library at 5:00 PM when Next Steps is on the agenda. October 1st is a study session on Next Steps. There are many concerns that property owners downtown and business owners have that the staff has not answered their questions. If we are concerned with extending the safety concerns about crossing a street, then extend the blinking light that says 18, 17, 15. Extend that time to cross the street. Next Steps came from the last city council, not this city council. You're carrying their water. I think you can be a hero after you get a price tag and just say no to Next Steps. Thank you.
Next up is Kelly Hahn, and after that will be Antonio Clark.
Hi, this is Kelly Hahn again. I am actually speaking on behalf of Charlie Fitch and Tammy Gita to the city, to the Durango City Council. We are writing to the council regarding the loss of parking on Main Street. We have worked in Durango for over 10 years, the last five on Main Street. We drive from Floravista in Aztec, New Mexico to work in Durango. We are nearly 60 years old. We no longer feel comfortable walking to our vehicles at night. We work in the service industry and get off work late. You have made us easy prey for anyone knowing we have to park farther away from our cars. The unhoused are placing their backpacks, carts, and buggies on the extended sidewalks at night. Is this what the council expected? We pay to drive to Durango and pay taxes in both states. We pay for parking. Are you going to protect us as we walk farther to our cars? You are putting visitors and workers in the service industry more at risk by eliminating parking on Main. The businesses are suffering lost income due to the economy and the cost of traveling as a tourist. How much more do you expect businesses, employees, and tourists to take? We deserve to feel safe in Durango. Charlie Fitch and Tammy Gita. Thank you.
Next will be Antonio Clark, followed by Kelly Stanley.
So my name is Antonio Clark. I'm with Toa Tangawi. I want you to know that your business community is feeling offended and ignored about the process of Next Steps. We feel like this is being jammed down our throats without any input. With the exception of a handful of businesses who have been driving this from the beginning, we have been disregarded from the inception. In the original survey in the winter of 2022, the percentage of respondents to that survey included only 4% Main Avenue property owners and 8% business owners, and that a larger percentage was never even targeted. So 88% of the respondents whose opinions have driven this plan do not own property or businesses in the Central Business District and will not be directly affected by it. Next Steps is a huge construction project that is redesigning our neighborhood, the Central Business District, where we have invested our lives and our life savings, where we spend the majority of our time, work our tails off, providing jobs, quality goods and services, and yet our opinions and concerns have had no weight. After the original survey, the consultants presented their preferred design, and we were told, this is preliminary. Things will change. We attended multiple meetings, listened to endless PR presentations by staff, filled out multiple very lopsided online surveys, voiced the same objections again and again and again, but nothing changed. When the plan was presented to council that spring, Savannah Lidle admitted to me, the only change- the only change was one parking space added in front of Buckley Park and parking spaces added to the thirteenth block of Main. That is what we got from participating in good faith in the city's public process. So we walked, we walked Main and in two days collected signatures from seventy-five business owners asking council to not move forward with this plan, but to instead consider the, what the design and construction would mean to your businesses and to please focus on parking, which is so vital to our livelihood. We got no response. Isn't it hard to believe that not one of us came up with a single viable idea that might shape this plan and support some compromises? Or that in the over two thousand interactions that Mr. King had with people, not a single idea had merit or any any sort of compromise was developed in an effort to make it less damaging to the businesses that collect your sales tax revenue? You, our request for compromises have been ignored, but you guys can make a change there. You are in a position to listen to us and ask questions. You have, you can have this project so that it can be changed and work for both sides. What compromises might be provided? You can ask the questions, what compromises might be provide more parking and instead of less? What can help your retailers as well as your restaurants? And how can you keep Main as safe as it, as it is? Once the concrete is poured.
Please wrap it up. Thank you.
Next is Kelly Stanley, followed by Stacy Hamer. No comment from Kelly Stanley, uh, so we can have Stacy Hamer.
I did not prepare anything to say, so I just want to kind of jump on with everything that's been said. I own the Durango Antique Market downtown, and parking is the number one issue. I don't hear anything about wanting to hang out downtown. Um, it doesn't affect my business. But I do have twenty-six individual business owners in my store. And it will affect all of us dearly if we lose any more parking. So that's all I have to say.
Next is Karen Johnson, followed by Martha Evers.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, my husband and I have owned a business in Durango for thirty years. And never would we have thought that there would be a city council with the majority, three to two vote, that would want to tear up historic downtown Durango. The majority, I would say ninety to ninety-five percent of the people that come in to our store, La Plata on Main. They talk about the unique part of Durango that they love to come visit and vacation, and they do not want to hassle with parking. Please, please solve the parking before you destroy downtown Durango. And I appreciate those counselors that have voted no on next step. I do. I have a letter from Shannon Campbell, owner of Sorrel Sky, that I would like to read, please. Dear Mayor and City Council members, I want to express my strong opposition to the proposed plan for redesigning Main Ave. As a business and property owner in Durango for over twenty-two years, I have deep concerns about the potential impacts of this plan on our community and local economy. The bump outs were initially introduced to support businesses during COVID nineteen pandemic. However, as we move past the pandemic, it is clear that these modifications are no longer necessary. The proposed redesign plan fails to address the current needs of our downtown area. One of my primary concerns is the reduction in parking space that will result from the redesign. Adequate parking is crucial for the success of local businesses, and I concur one hundred percent. The bump outs led to a significant reduction in parking availability, which has adversely impacted businesses. We hear that from our customers every day. Further diminishing parking spaces will only exacerbate this issue, making it increasingly difficult for customers to access downtown businesses. In addition, many restaurants invested heavily in creating outdoor dining and patio spaces before the pandemic, adapting to customer preferences. The proposed redesign plan is a government financed way for those who did not make the investment to unfairly compete with those businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Martha Evers, that'll be followed by Desiree Bell.
Martha's not here.
If Martha's not present, uh, we can move on to Desiree Bell. And that'll be followed by Jim Schultz. And it looks like we have Jim Schultz.
Hello, council. I'm Jim Schultz, living in City Limits of Durango. Um, previous business owner in Durango. It's what moved me here in nineteen seventy-nine. And, um, I've had multiple businesses down on Main Street. The city I previously moved here from, they tore their Main Street out. And it went approximately eight to ten feet deep. They found sellers coming out of retail stores in the basements, utility problems, sewer problems, water problems. The costs were unbelievable. The delay of time was like a year and a half past its deadline. The businesses that closed and went out, it literally made Main Street a ghost town. Uh, the reason I moved to Durango was to open up a business, and I did. But it was because of what the city had to offer, the historic district of downtown Durango. If we put in this Main Street, this next step program, we're going to destroy it. We don't want to be like everybody else, and that seems to be the continuous thing we see in here at these meetings. The fact that we've wasted four hundred thousand dollars to do this project, we have no income or low income housing, other motels that are being converted, pretty embarrassing. Um, the parking garage, the money that's been spent on that, it should be done. The crossover on Camino Del Rio, there's another project we need to take care of. Leave Main Street alone, get the bump outs back inside, we'll be fine. Thank you.
And Mayor, that's the end of public comment for non-agenda items.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, all right, number item fourteen, other new business. We have fourteen point one council direction regarding vacancies on city of Durango boards and commissions. Fay is virtual again. I see her.
Hey.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as you're aware from the packet, uh, we recently had a resignation of our, one of our members of the Board of Ethics. The remaining two members on the Board of Ethics do not form a quorum, and therefore the board cannot meet and conduct any business without a quorum. The two members that are remaining have only agreed to stay while the current matter is being resolved. And, uh, obviously they can't resolve that matter without additional members. So I'm asking for a direction from council, uh, as to if you would like our office to start advertising for applications, both for the Board of Ethics as well as the existing vacancies on the Financial Advisory Board, the Election Commission and the Retirement Board. And full information is in the packet, or I'm able to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Um, typically when boards and commissions are vacant, um, during, not during, like when we appoint them, do you go through just the typical process or what's the process you've done in the past?
We do use the same process. We advertise for a minimum of three weeks, uh, accepting applications. And then once the applications are accepted, we can, we move those on to the interview teams, uh, made up of the council and various representatives, uh, for review and interviews, and then bring it to the next meeting for actual appointments. Um, we did, however, in May of twenty-four, receive no applications for the Board of Ethics.
Okay, as one counselor, I wouldn't see why we wouldn't attempt to go through the process correctly. And then if, um, we don't receive any applications again, then we can make that decision at that point in time. I don't know. Any other thoughts?
Well, there's been a problem.
Oops, sorry. Gotcha.
There has been a problem getting people to stay on the ethics board. So I would probably entertain like some kind of motion. If we can't get anybody to be on the board, maybe the council should fill in. You know, something like that.
I'm, um, I'm going to look towards Jim and Mark potentially, maybe not this very second of any conflict of interest with council being on the Board of Ethics. I was, I was thinking we do the process potentially, and then if that didn't work, then we could talk about options.
Thank you. I would recommend that we go through the normal process first. And I think I've talked with Mark about following that process, getting that process rolling. If we don't find candidates, then we can look at, you know, alternative ways of getting folks on the board. But considering everything that's happened in the past, let's go with the process, you know, the normal process.
Yeah, I would agree. Just go through this, this next process, you know, maybe get probably P I Os already on it, you know, with helping kind of message some of those things, you know, maybe there's something we as a council body can maybe help with. Maybe trying to find people in the community that may be interested and maybe recommend recommendations. But yeah, I think we utilize all of our assets, um, at our disposal to try to get the word out.
There's a Colorado State Ethics, um, what is the name of it?
There is a, there is a state ethics board.
Is it, uh, is that an alternative to be used for ethics issues?
I think we've looked into that in the past, although off the top of my head, I don't know. We'd have to look into that.
I, I agree. We can follow the process for reapplying, but that would be another potential solution.
Yeah. Um, so I'll make a motion to direct the city manager to direct staff to follow the typical process for the hiring of all open board and commissions appointments. And, um, upon, if it doesn't work out, bring us maybe some options and suggestions as to how we move forward.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, vote.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Bossman's?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Yasi?
Yes.
All right, fourteen point two, proposed review of sustainability budget and action plan at the September fourth city council meeting as requested by Mayor Pro Tem Yasi.
Yes, Mayor and Council. So kind of under the new, uh, process of bringing new business, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Yasi brought this up as a, as an item. Uh, so we have Marty here to answer any questions to help and discuss what the council might want as that item to be proposed, uh, to, to discuss. So beforehand, we really couldn't talk about it. Uh, this allows us at least to have a discussion on that item. And Marty to answer any questions that maybe need to be clarified before being able to vote on an item to place on the agenda formally.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi, you want to start?
Yes. The reason I requested some updated information is because I know this past year you worked really hard on bringing our upstate, sustainability process into compliance with whatever goals we have established. And so what I would like, and I don't know if you can do this, is like just to update um, some of the programs and see how well we're fitting in with our goals for like twenty, thirty or fifty, you know, so the public is more confident that we are working towards those goals.
Okay, so just to make sure, Marty, so that's, that's the agenda item that you would like for the consideration. Is there a timeframe that you would like that presentation by?
No, there's no timeframe for me, but whatever works out with his schedule, because I know he's pretty busy.
Is this something that falls within, that we talk about during our budget retreat in October?
It could be, but it seems that Mayor Pro Tem is asking for more, not as much as the funding, but the progress of goals. So that might be something we can place in the next study session if the council agrees, uh, to direct staff to do so for a new agenda item.
I agree.
I would support that.
Yes, I, I support also. We'll have that on our next study session.
Excellent.
Thank you, Marty.
Uh, other new business, I'd just like to bring up, um, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I listened to the last meeting. And I know we made some adjustments, um, to the agenda item that failed today. Um, the council rules of procedures. Um, and so we made it some, uh, Counselor Woodruff made some adjustments, and, and those were in the packet. Um, and there was council support at that point in time to push that forward. And then it didn't come today, and I was wondering if there was support to bring up the ordinance. I think it's important to have some rules of procedure, and I think some of them were good and clean up. We've been trying to do rules of procedure since before. It was, there was like before I was on council, there was a big push, um, with the council to get rules and procedures. And so they've been, there's an effort, and so maybe working together to find that common ground and see what needs to be adjusted and changed and taking feedback potentially. I don't know if there was council, um, appetite for bringing it back up for discussion to camera out some of the, like the little details.
I, uh, I think we should bury this as an issue and just move on. I think the meetings are running well. Everybody has five minutes to talk. We disagree. We do it quarterly. It's all good.
Okay, are we at discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is one of my points is the fact that we have on the procedures, this don't bring the subject back up again. And so the last two meetings, we brought the subject back.
But it's not because we haven't, we don't have it on a procedure.
I know, but you know what? Sometimes we need to address these issues.
Yes.
You know, and it might be worth the discussion, but, um, I think what we've learned this past year is that we're able to conduct meetings without, um, getting out of control much. So right now I think we're at a standstill.
I think that the conversation allows us to talk about how we shape council conduct and conversation. Um, and I think that's really important to not only do the same thing for this group, but also for future groups and future bodies to, um, look at. And they also have the opportunity to repeal our ordinance or our resolution and create their own. Um, and obviously the chair also has the power to bring something up and say, I want to suspend these rules. And we can talk about it as a body and, and do it for one meeting. I think having, um, parameters that help guide the conversation aren't necessarily a bad thing. Um, and I think we can talk about some of those things and figure out what works, what doesn't work. Um, it allows us the opportunity to see what this council likes and then allows other council bodies to figure out what they're going to like. And I, I think this allows the conversation to be more honest and open.
I am. After your comment, I'd like to respond on that topic. Oh, yeah, we have Robert's rules. I think if anything, councils should get educated better on the following of, uh, I'm not saying that anybody doesn't, but I think, uh, it would be a good, uh, start for new counselors to get trained in Robert's rules and follow the Robert's rules. And as a mayor, you have to enforce those rules. And that, in my opinion, covers pretty much everything.
All right. Well, with that, we will have, oh, any other new business? Sorry. Yes. All right. Um, with that, we'll have adjournment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I can because there's no rules of the teacher.